Good evening. I'd like to call to order the meeting of Tuesday, November 19th, of the Planning Board of the Town of Westboro. My name's Hazel Nurse, I'm the Chairman of the Board. To my far left is Jenny Gingras, our Town Planner, Christina Kelleher, John Pizzoni, Mark Silverberg, John Gelsich to my right, Kristen Brulinger, our Assistant Town Planner, and the newest addition to the staff here, Dirk Bellado, who I'd like to welcome, who will be with us as the Administrative Assistant. The first item on our agenda is Harvest Way. Is there someone here for that? I'd also like to request, we're being recorded by Westboro TV, so everyone please be aware of that. All right, you're looking for lot releases. Would you like to explain to us what you're doing and why?
Yes, I'm Stephen Van Casse of The Writings LLC, and with me is Greg Snyder with me. He's running the job. What we'd like to do is just give you a little update on the roadway itself, where we are in the status and the completion of the roadway, and just some of the lots. And Greg works on the site, and he's going to just explain a little bit where we are.
Okay.
Okay, we're working on...
You introduce yourself, please.
Excuse me?
Introduce yourself.
Oh, Greg Snyder from The Writings. We're currently building seven houses, and they're in various states. We have four of those lots. Two of them are 100% complete, and the other two are at about 95%, and they are fully landscaped and stable. All the rest of the lots are all stable on the left side, so that's lot 27 through 43. And this is the left side of Libby Lane. We're requesting to get some lot releases on the right side, lots 30 through 46, I believe it is.
Yeah, and we've completed quite a bit of the roadwork also. We were going to ask for bond reduction, and we're not going to go there tonight with that. We were going back and forth with the DBW. I guess we have some differences in where we are. We think that we're about 75% complete with the roadway, and they're being a little more conservative, so we'll go back and forth. And maybe, and if we can't come to an agreement, we might just wait until the spring. Because the spring, we're planning on completing the granite curbing and the sidewalk on the right side. We've got all the bounds in, we've got the streetlights in, street signs in, so we've got the trail system all built. So, place is really looking good. We've had some challenging weather the last couple of years. Last year, it didn't stop raining. This year, it won't start raining. So, we've had to water lawns out there. But, in any event, that's what we have to deal with. So, yes, today, we're looking for lots on the right side for release. So, we are fully bonded for the whole entire road, for all the lots also. So, it's within your capacity to release all the lots. It would have been last year, but for whatever reason, you decided to do half the lots. So, like Greg said, four of the lots are completely grass-growing, sidewalks and patios and driveways are complete. Four houses are complete. The other, how many other houses? We have four of them?
Yeah, we have four more.
There's four other ones there in various stages of framing, but they're all, everything's stabilized, everything's wood-chipped, and they're at the site. Really looks good.
All right, I do know that we've had two letters recently from the Department of Engineering and Conservation that feel that we should wait on this at the moment. Jenny, could you perhaps just summarize those? I don't know if you've had a chance to see them, because I think one came in maybe yesterday, and one maybe last week.
Yeah, I did send the comments to the applicant, but we do not feel that the site is stabilized. At the last time we had the lot release request and the Board granted it, the discussion was around that we did not want to grant any more lot releases until the site was fully stabilized. We've had that conversation afterwards in internal meetings, and we definitely don't feel like the lot is stabilized. We had sent pictures to the Planning Board earlier, which definitely show that, you know, the grass isn't growing in as we think it should be. There have been drought conditions, so the seed never germinated, but there's been plenty of time to, you know, figure out some sort of watering system to get it to start growing. So, the slope currently lacks vegetation. It's only stabilized with mulch. And it's just, the base of the slopes has been neglected for months, which definitely exacerbates the potential erosion concerns. Also, the lower stormwater basin has been a big concern and a topic of discussion. It's been retaining water for months, even though we haven't really had any rain, and it's failing to drain within the 72-hour timeframe. So, that's definitely a concern, and it's a major problem for us. So, that amongst many other things, we do not recommend that the Planning Board release any more lots at this time until these items are taken care of.
All right, I think it might be a reasonable idea to schedule a site walk for the Planning Board on this, just to go and take a look at these. I don't think any of us have really, I haven't been up there recently. I don't know that anybody else has. But I think it might be worthwhile to take a walk up there and take a look at the property and what's going on, because of the list that we got, both from Conservation and from engineering on this. So, I don't know if there are any questions from the Board. My inclination is to adjourn this, at least till the next meeting at this point, before we move forward. John, do you have any comments?
No, no further comments.
Michael.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on the pictures that we saw. You know, when you say the slopes are stable, there's extensive areas without grass that are growing. And I understand it's been dry, but a neighbor spread the lawn about a month ago and watered it constantly, and she's got a nice green lawn. I don't see any of that up there. It's, there's huge bare patches. Like, what happens if...
We just reseeded those.
So, unfortunately...
No, you just reseeded those.
Yes.
It's almost Thanksgiving. Is that seed going to take?
Well, let me back up. We actually put all our efforts into growing the four lawns for the people who are potentially going to be moving in soon. So, we did a lot of effort, hand-watering out there. We didn't, we had that, so we waited all summer. We saw those spots were bare. We waited all summer, because it was such a dry summer. We hydroseeded that in September. Was it September, Greg? We hydroseeded in September with anticipation of September is the ideal time in a typical year to plant a lawn. It's been, I've been doing this 50 years. September is the best month. This year, September was not the best month. So, we did hydroseed it in September, and it didn't take, because it was just so hot and all dry. At the recommendation of, was it...
Of Jennifer Miller.
Jennifer Miller, she recommended we do...
Winter Rye.
Winter Rye. And we did do Winter Rye, I don't know if it was last year or the year before, and it did take. So, that could work. And so, we just had that done on her recommendation. She recommended it, and we did it the very next day. So, we did immediate response.
I don't want to argue with you on this, Steve, but I'm going to argue with you, because...
No, that's fine.
Did you water this grass? Because I understand the fire hydrants are in there...
No, we did not.
What's that?
We didn't water the slopes, and that's why it didn't grow.
Didn't water the slopes.
We were also waiting for water to get turned on.
Do you think that those slopes are going to, this seed is going to take before...
It's supposed to rain like crazy on Thursday, Friday, so maybe we're in a different...
All right, I agree with Hazel. I want to go see it. I'm not going to spend any more time going back and forth on it till I see it.
Do you want to get back to us on time? Are you going to schedule a time now, what are your thoughts on it?
No, we'll schedule a time through Jenny.
Through Jenny, okay. She'll get to us and let us know when.
Yeah.
We welcome that opportunity.
John, any questions?
Nothing from me.
Christina? Then could I have a motion to adjourn this matter until our next meeting, which is December 3, I believe?
I move we continue the, is it a hearing?
No.
No.
So, we just have, we don't even have to vote?
Just continue the matter.
Just table it until December 3? Do we need to vote?
Yes.
Okay. I move we table this matter until December 3, 2024.
Is there a second? All in favor? Thank you, Steve.
Okay, if you could forward those letters, because we haven't seen those letters. Thank you very much.
I did send it earlier in the day, the summary from the Conservation and Engineering Department, so I can forward it again.
Okay, thank you.
All right, the second matter is an A and R for 42 Lackey Street.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Grossworth with WDA Design Group here in Westboro, 31 East Main Street. Here before you for these two A and R lots at 42 Lackey Street. This is being carved out of a big 27-acre parcel. The two lots meet all of the required zoning for a single-family residential. We have 200 linear feet of frontage. We have a minimum of 50,000 square foot lots with a minimum of 90% upland. The wetlands have been flagged and confirmed with Jen Miller, the Concom agent. And we have had witness soil testing on site, and we have good soils. So, if there's any other questions, I think we meet all the criteria for simple-family lots in this area.
My concern, quite frankly, is that I understand that this property went through probate.
The property went, I'm Chuck Lane. I'm the owner with my sister.
Right.
The land is my great-grandfather's farm, which was active until my grandfather died in 1962. On the advice of Councilor Jim Tajin, we had the right to sell based on the will, so we've done that. Marshall Gould represents me. If there should be an issue, we're happy to create a deed, but...
That, yeah, I personally would like to see a deed created on this, because at the moment, if you look at the title or look at the assessors, it's listed still. I believe in your aunt, was it?
My aunt is my sister.
Your sister, I'm sorry. And just to make sure that title looks clear coming through, I would like to see a confirmation deed filed prior to the time that the A and R is filed. Does everyone understand my concern about this?
If the Planning Board agrees, though, I think that you can still endorse the A and R, but we would just like to see that done before the building permit.
That would be all right. But as I said, I would like a confirmation.
Okay, yeah, this is, it's not a problem. I actually, you know, time goes by. My aunt died in 1995, and it was probate. I see documents between 95 and 99. Jim Tajin, at that time, didn't think we needed to do it, so we did not. But there is no issue here, so we're happy to...
Yeah, that I understand. I mean, the thing is, even, you know, if you were to sell the property to have clear title, you might have been asked to file some sort of a confirmation deed on it. So, as a Planning Board, I think it just...
We've offered that.
Yeah, it clears up for us the title before we make the final on the A and R. But other than that, I have no comments on the A and R. John?
No additional comments.
Mark?
Yeah, can I ask you some questions? And I don't know, it's less about the A and R, but it's more about the remaining land that you're not selling to Kendall Homes. Are you selling the whole parcel to them?
Well, we haven't sold it to anyone at this stage.
Well, we would believe it's actively listed for sale, those two homes.
The front two are for sale.
Yeah.
The, we've done testing on three lots. There is, there's a trail across the back that would be open space, and it would be our intention to... I'm a member of the Westboro Community Land Trust, and in all likelihood, I, my sister and I, would give the remaining open space to Westboro Community Land Trust.
We are working on plans for the back lots.
Yeah, I just know that Kendall Homes did that for the town when they built on the Blueberry Ladies Lot back in 16, I think it was. And I just didn't know if you were going to end up with excess open space, if it could go there.
Yes.
Again, I'm not trying to, if you have other plans for it, that's fine, but it looks like there's a lot of wetlands. I just, whatever you're not...
Wetlands in between, we have laid out a trail.
Yeah.
And I, there's nobody wants us to be nice more than me.
Okay.
All right, nobody. And I've walked the thing hundreds of times. And, you know, it will be nice at the end in anticipation. There's two A and R lots at the front. Because of the restrictive zoning, there's only three lots allowed at the back. And there will be a trail with open space.
Great, thank you.
Do we need to come back?
No.
All right, thank you.
John, any questions?
Nothing from me.
Mr. Anderson?
No questions.
Okay, Jen, we're all set on this end?
I just have one comment, and I think I mentioned this before, but I want to make sure that you understand that for a two-family use, you would need 250 feet of frontage. This meets the requirements in that zoning district. But if you wanted to build a two-family or sell it for a two-family, you wouldn't be able to, because it doesn't meet that. So, I just want to make sure you understand that.
There's no intention to do that.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Could I have a motion to approve the A and R?
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and when you do the filing of the deed, if you'd send a copy to the Planning Department...
Yes, we'll get it to Jen Marshall. Marshall's prepared to do this.
All right, then we can, after that, we can pick up side copy. Okay, perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, our third matter is 165 Flanders Road. And I know there's been a request for a continuance on this until our next meeting. One of the problems being, I guess they have to meet with Conservation once more, and they don't have a meeting with them, I believe, till the 10th of December.
They actually requested February due to timing with Conservation.
February?
But they did submit a detailed letter about the continuance. I don't know if the Board had time to read it, but I can bring it up if you would like me to, and if you want me to read it, I can.
Maybe you could summarize it.
Okay, I'm just locating it, one moment.
I mean, this is a matter we first heard in December of 2022, I believe.
Yes.
Basically, they get, it says they get some comments from Concom, they're revising their plans, and they're asking us to continue at the February 4.
Thank you.
Why is it going to take till February to deal with this? Seems an awfully long time away since they're meeting with Concom, I think in December, aren't they?
So, there are some issues with the stormwater that they need to figure out before they can finalize the site plans and finalize the stormwater plan. The current situation that they have or that they're proposing is not going to work according to our stormwater standards. And so, that's the issue with Conservation and planning and engineering right now. It's not just Conservation. So, they have not provided a response to the peer review yet. They are waiting to work it out with Conservation first.
Mark, you had a question?
Well, the letter says that they don't expect to be back at Conservation until January.
I see that, yeah.
I'd rather not see them on the agenda again until they're actually ready to go. Like, I'm tired of seeing it on the agenda and extended. So, if it's February or June, I don't really care. I just don't want to keep extending it.
All right, I just want to make sure they're working on this. All right, if everyone agrees, then could I have a motion to continue this matter till February, what is it, 4, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments from the Board members? All in favor? Okay. Jenny, see, any pressure you can put on them to move this forward, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely.
The Board would appreciate it. Silver Hollow Estates. Good evening.
Hello, I'm Steve Rosenfield. I'm the owner's representative for Silver Hollow Estates.
Okay, and you were here tonight for?
It's a request for a de minimis change to the landscaping plan concerning 44 trees that were to be planted alongside Mount... concerning 44 trees that were to be planted alongside Mount Pleasant Street outside of the development.
And I understand the tree warden has looked at it, as has... Did Conservation look at it too, Jenny?
Yes.
Yeah, on that. I mean, I remember the original site plan, that the reason they did this was so that because neighbors across the street were concerned about headlights coming out of the street shining into theirs. But driving and looking at it, it seems like there's quite a lot of vegetation along that side of the road, and that to dig that all up, to put trees in, doesn't seem like a sensible thing to do as far as Conservation goes, I would think. But so I, you know, I would certainly think the board should entertain not having the... To have Silver Hollow paint, plant those 17 trees. But let's see what the board says. Christina, do you have any comments on this?
I do not.
John Presley?
I'm good.
Mark?
Nope, I'm good.
John?
I would agree with you. Just leave the natural vegetation as it is. It looks nice. I don't see why we'd want to remove that.
Okay, could I have a motion?
I move that the planning board consider the modification and remove the requirement to plant the 44 trees along Mount Pleasant Street as a de minimis and shall not require a full public hearing subject to the following conditions. The determinate, one, the determination is limited to the documents submitted as part of the application. Two, all terms and conditions of the original definitive open space decision dated October 16th, 2008, and all subsequent modifications, unless modified herein, shall be brought forward in full force and effect with this modification. And three, the applicant shall record this decision with the Worcester Registry of Deeds before the commencement of authorized site activity and shall submit proof of recording to the planning board. Failure to record this decision before the commencement of authorized site activity shall result in the rescission of this decision.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, Steve. Project looks good.
Thank you very much. We're heading towards the last three.
Right.
We can see it. Thank you very much.
You're getting there slowly but surely. Is there anyone here on item three, which is approval of the housing production plan? Okay. Yeah, I do. I just want to... I didn't want a lot of people to be sitting around here that, you know, had to wait for something. So, all right. On that basis, then, we'll go to the 210 Turnpike Road. Do you have a representative here?
That doesn't work.
Before we start, I have to read the public notice for this matter. In accordance with the provisions of MGL Chapter 48, Section 9, and Sections 3.1 and Attachment, the Use Regulation Schedule of the Town of Westboro Zoning Bylaw, the Westboro Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November 19th, 2024, at 6:30 PM on application record number 24-03508, requesting a special permit and site plan review for the redevelopment of a portion of parking lot to a 2,400-square-foot drive-up coffee shop. The location of the proposed project is 210 Turnpike Road, Assessor's Parcel ID 27-58-0, Westboro, Massachusetts, located in the Highway Business Zoning District. The owner and applicant for the filing is Sixth Humphrey Street Realty Trust. The legal notice was published on November 1st, 2024, and November 8th, 2024, in the Community Advocate. Comments have been received from Conservation Department, Health Department, Fire Department, Police Department, School Department, Sustainability Coordinator, Treasurer, Tax Collector Office, Act of Transportation, and Safety Committee and Building Commissioner. There were also 17 letters from the Butters received. The documents and comments associated with this application are available on the Town of Westboro Planning Department website and through the permitting portal, PermitPro.
And I just want to add that we also did receive comments from the select board. They were just uploaded right before the meeting.
All right, if you could introduce yourself and onward.
For the record, my name is Sam Malafronte.
Could you spell your name? It just makes it easier for...
Sam, S-A-M, Malafronte. It's M-A-L-A-F-R-O-N-T-E.
Thank you. We are televised, and sometimes it doesn't come through and cannot be heard on the tele... Through the television. So we're trying to make it a little easier for people who are watching these matters to be able to know who's been here.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm a licensed engineer in the Commonwealth. I'm with Solely Engineering Offices at 11 Vanderbilt Ave in Norwood, Mass. And we are the site civil, as well as the traffic transportation engineer for the project. John Nichols is the owner and trustee of Sixth Humphrey Street Realty Trust, and he's here as well. I have a brief presentation that I'd like to go through, and then if you guys could hold all comments or questions. But if you do feel the need to interrupt, please, please do so. So site location, I'm sure most of you are familiar with the site. It's on the corner of Park Street and Turnpike Road. It's along the eastbound travelway of Route 9. And it's a 3.9-plus-or-minus-acre parcel. The western portion of the parcel is largely wetlands. The eastern portion is currently developed with a commercial retail office building and 120-plus-or-minus parking spaces. As previously mentioned, the site is zoned in the Highway Business Zoning District, much like the entire Route 9 corridor. During our kind of due diligence of the site, we came across the original approved site plan for the project. It was approved and built, I believe, in between 1979 and 1980. It was originally built and designed as a surplus parking lot, as well as an ice cream stand for the adjacent restaurant across Park Street that still exists, that building. And the site in existing conditions is largely what it was in 1979 or 1980. Not too much has changed, to be honest. It's kind of a underutilized commercial parcel in town. It's extremely overparked for the size of the building and the development. And yeah, that's the existing conditions. We did perform a limited topo survey for the property, which confirmed our assumptions of the parking, site conditions, utilities, drainage, and topography of the existing front parking area. Couple things to note with the property. To the south, along the southern property line, or kind of traversing the southern property line, there's an existing oil pipeline easement, which is an existing transmission line, subsurface transmission line. Additionally, there's a stormwater conveyance that conveys water from the property, I believe it's 208 Turnpike, which was the former restaurant. The drainage line is kind of shown across the property, but there's a catch basin on that property. It's conveyed through 210 Turnpike and discharges towards the wetland in the western portion of the site. The project proposes a... The application proposes a 2,400-square-foot slab-on-grade coffee shop with an associated drive-through interior and exterior seating. The total seat count is 65 currently, with 45 interior seats and 20 proposed exterior seats. In total, the proposed development, there's 80 proposed parking spaces. There's sufficient queuing, both from a tenant perspective, tenant prototypical perspective, as well as a Westboro Site Plan Review Regulation perspective. There's ample queue onsite for the drive-through. There are three bike racks proposed, kind of adjacent to the front patio. And there are five designated parking spaces out front of the coffee shop that will be used for a time-limited parking or mobile-order parking. The 7,200-square-foot existing building, it's two floors. There's a walkout basement, which is currently occupied by... A portion of it occupied by budget blinds. And then the first floor is partially occupied by a dental office. This building is proposed to maintain operations throughout construction and post-construction as well. The intent is to keep those businesses operating and keep the building occupied as it is currently. Because this is a special permit, I would like to go through the findings of fact, which were submitted as part of the application. So it is in a Highway Business Zoning District. The restaurant involving a drive-up window service is permitted by special permit approval from the planning board. Turnpike Road is an area of Westboro that's more densely developed with commercial businesses that include drive-through uses, transit-oriented uses, and convenient commercial uses. The project is proposed in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zone and the zoning bylaw. As stated previously, the 210 Turnpike Road property, it's an underutilized commercial property in town, and revitalization of the property will bring economic and aesthetic improvement to the neighborhood and the town along that Route 9 corridor. As part of the special permit findings of fact, proving adequate utility, capacity, and connections is part of that. Water and sewer will be provided by the Westboro Municipal Water and Sewer. There's an existing water main within Park Street, and we'll be utilizing the existing sewer lateral that the current building uses. We're going to be replacing that and upgrading it. Electric and gas will be national grid and ever-source. And we received a comment from the Building Commissioner that the site plan complies with all current zoning regulations as proposed, as it's shown on the zoning table on the site plan. So in existing conditions, there's 120-plus-or-minus parking spaces, severely overparked for the size of the building that exists. The proposed coffee shop development reduces that parking count onsite to 80, which is still almost double what the zoning requirement is for parking regulations. It utilizing a one space per four seats and then a 3.5 spaces per 1,000 square foot for the office retail building, only required is 42 parking spaces. We're proposing 80. A traffic impact study has been submitted as part of the application. There's adequate parking for the proposed operations. There's adequate onsite queuing for the proposed operations, both in compliance with the Westboro Site Plan Review Rules and Regulations. We also submitted a queue analysis, which was performed at five coffee shops in the area in January of this year. Three bike racks are proposed, which would provide six-plus bike racking... Six-plus bike parking spaces. There are adequate pavement markings, crosswalks, signage to facilitate safe pedestrian vehicular circulations onsite. The project will not constitute a nuisance due to air, water pollution, flooding, noise, dust, vibration, lighting, or visually offensive structures and accessories. And it is proposed to maintain the architectural scale and style of the surrounding properties. As part of the submittal, we did submit a surface area figure. This was brought up at the pre-application meeting we had with staff. The proposed conditions propose an increase of just under 5,500 square feet of pervious area onsite. So we'll be reducing and removing pavement just under 5,500 square feet and improving that with lawn and grass area. The drive-through queue... Westboro's Site Plan Review Regulations require eight queue spaces before the order board and four spaces between the order board and the pickup window. The tenant, the proposed tenant, requires seven spaces after the order board, so between the order board and the pickup window, and typically four to five after or prior to the order board. So we're proposing 14 queue spaces within the drive-through itself. And this property's a little unique. It has ample kind of onsite queuing, that queuing capacity. So without really impacting the operations of the property, we could fit 22-plus-car queue, satisfying both the tenant and the town's drive-through queue requirements. We did submit and speak with the Westboro Fire Department. The site has been designed to accommodate the turning movements of the Westboro Fire Department's ladder truck, which is a 47-foot truck. The select board did issue a comment that they condition or requested that the board consider regarding operations to be... Delivery operations to be limited to a 47-foot vehicle during business hours due to the size of the Westboro fire truck. That was their comment. That was before them last Tuesday. We did show adequate turning movements for an SU-30 box truck, as well as a refuse vehicle for the dumpster. I have a feeling that the public, based on the comments that we've received or letters, traffic is going to be a topic of discussion tonight. So I did prepare this slide to kind of preface any of the public's comments and the board as well. So in proposed conditions, we studied three peak hours: AM peak hour, PM peak hour, and Saturday midday peak hour. Because this property is located on a state highway, we utilize a 75% bypass-by ratio, which what that means is although the AM peak hour, we're expecting 206 vehicle trips, so 105 entering trips and 101 exiting trips in the peak hour in the AM, only 51 of them are new trips to the network. And what that means is 75% of the anticipated vehicles that will visit the site are currently or normally on the network of Route 9, Park Street, and the adjacent streets that we analyzed. We can certainly go through this in more detail if a comment presents itself, but I did want to prepare this in anticipation of comments. We do have full-designed permitting plans set. We have been issued a lengthy comment letter from the peer reviewer regarding stormwater and site design. So we are working through those comments, but I didn't want to issue any revised plans until I was before you and heard some comments from the planning board as well. There is a subsurface infiltration system proposed to the rear of the site. It's going to collect the building roof runoff, as well as some of the landscaped islands behind the site, behind the building. It is designed in compliance with the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook. It has adequate recharge volume for the entire site, actually. In existing conditions, there's minimal stormwater features. I think there's one or two catch basins, John, and a head wall out back. There's no stormwater quality. There's no recharge measures. There's no minimal stormwater management systems. So because we are reducing impervious surfaces onsite, it is considered a redevelopment project based on the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook. So the design far exceeds the requirements set forth by that handbook and the state regulations. We did speak, had lengthy conversations with the DPW and the town engineer regarding the sewer allocation for the property. This property, as I once said, it was initially developed as restaurant ice cream surplus parking for the former restaurant. It has just over 3,600 gallons per day, I believe, of sewer allocation. So the proposed coffee shop, as well as the existing building, is far below what the allocated sewer flows are for the property. And this was confirmed with the DPW and engineering as well. And this was confirmed with the DPW and engineering as well. We are proposing a robust landscape plan with street trees along Park Street. We have a stormwater depression in the rear of the building that will be planted with adequate rain garden-type species. And then there's native shrubs and grasses proposed throughout the site. And this, the landscape plan is proposed in accordance with the tenant specifications and prototypical landscaping for the property. The planning board had a site visit last Tuesday as well, I believe. And one of the topics that was brought up was the existing lighting. Currently, the existing lighting, I think it was probably installed, might be original to the property, but it's not dark sky compliant, it's not LED. John has said many of them don't work or broken. So as part of the project, we are going to propose new pole-mounted fixtures and wall packs. All of these fixtures will be LED, dark sky compliant, full-cut-off fixtures. And yeah, that's kind of, the front portion of the property will be relit, basically, for this project. The exterior elevations, these are, and this is part of the building commissioner's comments, these are conceptual at this point. They don't need to be finalized until building permit is submitted for. But this is the prototypical elevations that are proposed. It's a brick-and-wood veneer. We've been going back and forth with the tenant on the design of the building. Obviously, there's a large visibility along Route 9 that's more or less going to be the rear of the building. So we're discussing kind of a false facade along that side, so it looks more like the front of the building as opposed to just a brick wall or something of that sort. And with that, I'd like to kind of open it up to any comments or questions, or I'd be happy to go through stuff more extensively, or if there's any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I think we'll go ahead and hear comments from the board, and then I will open it up for comments from the public. And so Christina, do you have any comments on this?
I do, yes. Can you talk a little bit more about the traffic and how you got to the anticipated increase in traffic numbers? And also a clarifying kind of question on that. So using the morning numbers, I think you had 51 net new trips, 20-some-odd in and 20-some-odd out. Am I correct in understanding that that's really only 25 cars? It's just kind of coming on and off? Or is that 50 cars?
No, it's 105 cars, but they're anticipating that 79 of them.
I guess just for the increase, right? If it's, if it's 100 now.
There's 79 pass-by, so they're basically saying that 79 cars are gonna, that are already going down Route 9 East are gonna just get off here and then back on Route 9 East. So those are the pass-by trips.
I can explain it if you'd like.
Why don't you do it? Because you'll do it better than I can.
So we used a program called Synchro to analyze the roadway network. What you do with the development is you put a use to the development, and it, utilizing engineering, standard engineering numbers on specific uses, they're empirical data that's backed by studies. You put a use to the development, and it generates, based on square footage and anticipated volume, the impact of the network. So we did counts in, traffic counts in, might have been July of this year, on Park Street. And then we also utilized the 2023 MAST-DOT traffic counts on Route 9. Yeah, 2023 eastbound traffic volume along Route 9 from their count stations that they yearly or bi-yearly count the state highways. So we took all that data, put it into the program, and it generates kind of an anticipated volume of new trips, net trips, and the impacts to the intersections that we analyzed. So we analyzed the Park Street and Turnpike Road intersection. So obviously, that's a right-in-only and a right-out-only, because Turnpike Road is a divided highway. And then we analyzed the driveway of 210 Turnpike and Park Street. We implemented a 50% ratio of entering and exiting vehicles. So we're anticipating 50% of our vehicles are going to be entering, going northbound on Park Street, and 50% are going to be entering, coming off Route 9 southbound. And we also put the same split on exiting vehicles. So we're anticipating 50% of our vehicles are going to take a right out of the driveway, and 50% are going to take a left out of the driveway. Obviously, if you take a right, you can still access Route 9 in both directions, utilizing kind of the roundabout way. We anticipate local traffic might utilize that. That's why we put the 50% ratio to it. But to answer your question kind of regarding the new trips and the total trips, I think the other planning board member was mentioning, so in total for the AM peak hour, we're anticipating 206 vehicle trips, which is 105 entering vehicles and 101 exiting vehicles.
So you're only anticipating between 5:00 AM and 10:00 AM 100?
It's peak hour.
Per hour.
Per hour, okay.
Peak hour.
Okay, okay, gotcha, gotcha.
So I believe this analyzed peak hour was between 7:00 and 8:00 AM. I could be mistaken. I'd have to look at the traffic impact study. But it's 200 total, 206 total trips in the peak hour.
So you're taking off of exist, and does that existing traffic mean people who are actually turning, or people who are just gonna kind of, who are going by? Because I guess my concern is the influx and people needing to turn on and off. So I'm trying to understand, not just like, oh, who was already going by? And so that's not, that Route 9's not affected, but like what that intersection's going to look like?
Right. So we're anticipating in the peak hour, AM peak hour I'll speak to, we would have, because we have a 50% split. So we're anticipating out of the 25 new vehicles that will be visiting the site that will add to the roadway network, we're anticipating 13 are going to be taking a right off Park Street, 13 additional vehicles. And then the other 12 will be taking a right down Park Street, looping around and going on their way. That 50% split is what I'm speaking to.
Okay. That's helpful. And then my other question was about the trucks. I think you mentioned that the 47-foot trucks would need to be outside of regular business hours?
So the select board.
Yeah.
Yeah, so when I was in front of the select board last Tuesday, one of the select board members had a couple of comments regarding traffic, as well as the turning movements that I'm presenting here. He, they issued a comment that recommended to the planning board deliveries greater than the length of the fire department ladder truck, which is 47 feet, be restricted to outside business hours. I'm not sure, that wasn't, that comment that came in that letter wasn't specifically discussed regarding the business hours. I'm not sure what that means. Obviously, this coffee shop would operate pretty much from 5:00 AM to, they close at 8:00 PM. So I'm not sure if they mean normal business hours, like a nine-to-five when it's busier, or that wasn't specifically discussed or commented on in the letter.
Okay. And then I guess, I'm not sure if you know this, but do you have a sense of, like, I don't know how long trucks are? Like, is a 40s, is that the type of truck that would be impacted, or is that larger? And, and I ask because I'm curious what that will then mean for potentially louder traffics at the ends, even if it's like technically within business hours? If that, if their trucks will be impacted, or, oh, no, their trucks don't, they come more locally and they're not.
The fire department trucks?
No, no. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were saying delivery trucks.
I am, yeah.
Okay. So my question is, do we have a sense of if that comment actually impacts their delivery?
No, I mean, normal business hours, if you restrict it.
Yeah, but I would assume that the board is likely meant during your business hours. So in other words, your deliveries would have to be before, what time did you open? You said five?
I think they're, yeah, five.
Before five or after eight?
Yeah. Because of the character of the neighborhood, I would recommend the board modify that slightly. I don't think anyone, any residential neighbor's going to want a delivery truck at 4:30 in the morning. The peak hour for this facility is going to be between 6:30 and 8:00. And then there's a midday peak about 11:30 to 2:00 PM. And then in the evening, I was just at the Starbucks on 139 Turnpike, and there was two people in there for the last three hours. So I think deliveries in the later evening or later afternoon are sufficient, but I think it's also something the board should consider. I'm not sure if there's been delivery restrictions on other drive-through uses in town either. So that's something I think should be considered as well.
Okay. Those are all my questions.
Can I ask a follow-up question to one of Chris's questions? So you talked about the 50-50 split of the right turn on the park and then the, I guess, left turn onto wherever you go, Route 9. How did you come up with that 50-50 split? I just feel like it would be more from Route 9 than from Park Street. So I feel like the 50, it should be more 75-25. So if you have, I'm just looking for your methodology of like the 50-50 and how you came up with that split.
I would have to get back to on the specific methodology. I'd have to speak with the traffic designer on this. I'm certain there could be a tweak to it. But in the same sense, during the AM peak we'll speak to, we are anticipating the queues on Park Street to be longer than existing conditions. That stop-controlled intersection is a stop-controlled intersection on a principal arterial roadway. It operates in existing conditions, level of service F. The proposed doesn't make a detriment to that intersection. Stop-controlled intersection on principal arterials are anticipated and expected to operate at level service F because there's such a high volume on Route 9. So if there's a longer queue and you're leaving the site, if you're familiar with the area as, I mean, once this building is operational for a couple of months, everyone that goes there is going to be daily or weekly customers, mostly. If you're familiar and you see a long queue on Park Street, it's very easy to take a right and still reach Route 9, and you can actually go in both directions. So that's kind of the general methodology of it, but I could certainly get more information on the exact 50-50 split if you'd like.
Yeah, I guess the concern just goes to if, if there is more going towards Route 9, what is that going to do to onsite queuing? What is that going to do to blocking that intersection and cars trying to get to the existing businesses? Is it going to block that driveway because cars are waiting to, more cars than are planned are waiting to turn left to go on Route 9 than to turn right? And I understand, you know, if it gets bad enough, people are going to say, I'm going to loop around and go right. But the cars that, sorry, the cars that might do that are, jeez, I don't know what I'm doing over here. The cars that are, you know, willing to do that might be at the back of the line and not be able to get out of the way. So I'm just, I just want to make sure that if that is, you know, the level of, level F service, completely understand that. It's a, you know, terrible intersection no matter what. But if we can mitigate the impact so that we're not blocking that driveway, we're not blocking access to Park Street so that there could be some type of traffic flow at all times.
Yeah, I think that's something, I think onsite signage could potentially help.
Or like a, you know, painted box in the intersection and saying, you know, don't park here.
Yeah, and that was a comment, it wasn't on the comment letter, I don't believe, from the select board, but it was discussed. Also, they had a comment regarding restricting delivery vehicles to only accessing, exiting the site via Route 9. The intersection that I spoke to earlier with the Starbucks Convenience MD is that is designed for U-turn vehicles of any type of vehicle that would be traveling the roadway. So if a delivery truck came and they wanted to go westbound on Route 9, they wouldn't take a right out of Park Street. What they would do is they would take a left, go up Park Street, take a right onto Route 9, and then go down to the next intersection, make a U-turn. They requested onsite signage to kind of inform delivery vehicles of that. And it's obviously not shown here. We haven't submitted revised plans, but it's something we wanted to discuss with the planning board as well.
I'm sorry, do you mind going back to the slide that has the numbers of the queued cars? Because kind of to John's point, I'm just curious, or like the, I have, I don't know, one to eight to 12, I'm just curious how far? Because that gives you a sense, too, of how many, oh, there you go. Of how many refs, so probably 10 cars? I'm just thinking how many cars deep it is for the, to get to what, to John's comment.
Sorry, I brought a laser pointer. Yeah, so the tenants, the tenant prototypical design for this, this is obviously proposed at Starbucks. The tenant requires between 10, 13 vehicles in their driver. Analysis that we submitted implies five Starbucks throughout the Commonwealth. A couple were on the South Shore, a couple were on the North Shore, and maybe one of those are out there. All of them were relatively similar ADT on the roadways, roughly 20,000 vehicles per day. Route 9 is 23,000 plus-or-minus vehicles per day. So this satisfies that queuing of prototypical Starbucks.
Sorry, just to clarify, I think my comment was more, I was curious how many cars fit on Park Street between the corner.
Can you stand over the microphone?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. Yes, I was looking at how many cars between Route 9 and down Park Street. I was trying to use the, basically your queue as a gauge to see what the street was, because I was just curious, but it probably is like 10 cars deep that it can go.
Yeah, I'm hoping, I mean, the proposal is that there wouldn't be any impacts to Park Street. This queue has far greater queue than existing Starbucks in town. It has far greater queue than the prototypical queue Starbucks looks for, and it has far greater queue than the town site plan review regulations require. But I do hear your concerns and kind of what you're looking at, the queuing.
That was it for me.
A follow-up question on this, or?
Well, I have a lot of questions on this, but on that specific.
Why don't you wait for just a second?
Mark, go ahead.
Go ahead, Mark.
So as far as that goes, if you're, I don't know what your anticipated queues are, but you're preparing for the worst-case scenario of 22 cars in the queue. And my fear is that it takes longer to get out onto Route 9 than it does to buy a coffee. So do we have room enough for 22 cars to queue onto Route 9? And your hypothetical says, well, if it's that bad, then they'll turn down Park Street. But your traffic report, or your traffic analysis, didn't analyze the intersection of Park Street and Milk Street, or any of the other side streets on Park Street. I mean, if you're looking at, the other problem I have, right, I mean, you're talking 79 cars pass by, right? And if this site was only accessed from Route 9 and not from Park Street, I'd say that's fine, 79 cars on, 79 cars back on Route 9, great, you know, that's. But the problem is, you're going to have, a lot of those 79 cars are coming from the rotary, getting on Milk Street on Route 9, and they're going to stop at, and, you know, if they were going up to Milk Street to West Meadow Plaza, getting on Route 9 East and going to Starbucks, but if they're coming from the rotary, they're going to go up Park Street to get to this driveway. And that's going to increase traffic on Park Street. And the same thing goes, is everybody going to the rotary who wants a coffee, instead of going up to Lyman Street, they're going to jump off here, get the coffee, and they're going to go down Park Street, and they're going to try and get on a Milk Street, which is almost as bad as Route 9 to get on, depending on what time of day. That's hyperbole, I'm sorry, but it's bad. I mean, that's not a great intersection. So I, I just, my feeling is we need to send this out for a peer review. And I, I'm really concerned, I mean, there's two separate issues. Well, they're all interconnected, but can you get on and off Route 9 safely from Park Street? You just said earlier it's an F intersection, so that's, it makes it okay to keep it as an F intersection, but that doesn't help the people using Park Street on a daily basis who live there. Is it's going to be safe on Park Street? I know there's a place where the sidewalks switch sides and there's no existing crosswalk. I don't know about the intersection at Park and Milk. I believe there's a crosswalk, but I don't know if it's got a flashing beacon or any of that. I realize a lot of your traffic's in the morning, but. I realize a lot of your traffic's in the morning, but, you know.
Yeah, the Saturday midday is actually the peak of the whole traffic analysis for a Starbucks. But obviously, that's once a week, the AM is consistent five to six days a week. And this was a comment, I'm glad you brought it up because I have a feeling some of the butters are going to bring this up as well that are here tonight. But, and it was actually brought up at the select board meeting as well regarding the existing intersection. Obviously, we're not proposing any, any improvements to the Route 9 right away. We can certainly submit this as an indirect access review to the MassDOT District 3 office. In our experience, with minimal impacts and propose new trips, in the peak hour, we're proposing 13 trips on and off, new trips, on Park Street. They typically don't review projects that have such minimal impact to the state right away.
That's, sorry to interrupt you. Go ahead.
But I did want to speak to the Park Street, Route 9 intersection. So I took a look at it preliminarily. So the, the speed limit on Route 9 is 55 mile per hour. In October 2024, the 85 percentile speed on Route 9 was 62 miles per hour. So we rounded up to 65 miles per hour, and that would require an intersection site distance of 625 feet, based on standard engineering practices and calculations. Based on my judgment, Google Earth, and I obviously didn't go out there and measure, and we don't have survey data of the entire Route 9, but there's a, there's a view shed looking left on Park Street of 900-plus feet. It's actually closer to 1,000 from what I can see. And this is kind of a Google Maps view as well, looking down towards Park Street. I'm certainly not arguing that that intersection is somewhat dangerous. Any principal arterial roadway pulling onto that is a challenge at any, on any state highway in the Commonwealth. But it certainly doesn't, the proposed development doesn't impact it detrimentally to warrant improvements kind of outside of the scope of the project. And that's kind of what our traffic study supports as well.
Right, I, I take issue with your statement, though, that you're looking at 26 new trips on Park, new trips, right? Every, virtually every single one of those 79 pass-by trips is a new car turning onto Park Street. They're not exist, they're currently, they're just going by at 65 miles an hour, right? Now they're going to stop and turn onto Park Street.
But I think what you're missing on.
You're taking that F intersection, and my, my other question was, you, you talked about delivery trucks. How, what size delivery trucks are we talking about? Because I missed that.
So we've submitted figures for a single-unit box truck, 30-foot SU30.
So I think they can probably make that turn, but anything larger is going to have a hard time making that turn when there's cars in queue trying to get onto Route 9 East.
You're just speaking on the intersection of Park Street? Yeah, I, I can't really speak to that. Obviously, that's in the state right away, and that's an existing condition that I would assume is in, in design and compliance with their standards. It's obviously a highway business corridor, and across Route 9 is, has commercial businesses of transit-oriented uses.
Have you talked to MassDOT, or is there plans to talk to MassDOT about any signage indicating merging traffic or exiting and merging traffic to give, I know it's a lot of, it's 1,000 feet of site distance, but just because it's two lanes there.
Yeah.
Give people a chance to get over to the left lane and make room for the people merging onto the, onto the highway and getting off on the highway?
So typically with MassDOT submissions, it, they won't look at a project until you have local approvals. Any access permit requires a planning board approval or decision prior to them reviewing the project. We do plan to informally submit to the District 3 office. Like I said, I, I have, I'm obviously not the permanent engineer for the districts, but I have a, we've seen in past projects that such minimal impacts to the state highway, they won't, it doesn't warrant improvements or signage or any of that such within their right away. I will say, we did, in the traffic impact study, we did analyze the crash data for, on the Route 9 corridor, and between 2019 and 2021, so it was a three-year study, there was two accidents at the intersection of Park Street and Route 9, which is not a substantial amount of, of accidents for an intersection, especially on a principal arterial roadway with a speed limit of 55 mile per hour. And there were zero accidents on Park Street during that three, zero reported accidents during that three-year window. The two accidents that were reported and are on the database were both rear-end collisions. Neither of them were geometric or site distance issue, it was vehicular operator error of just not slowing down in adequate enough time.
Was there any thought about approaching MassDOT about an entry and an exit on Route 9? In other words, putting in an entry point on Route 9 instead of just using Park Street? I mean, is there some way, I don't know how difficult that would be to do.
You mean like a driveway access?
Yeah, another driveway access.
So John and I kind of, and this project has been conceptually designed for well over a year, and we kind of did weigh all the options on the site orientation. So there's a couple of issues with that. One being topography of the site. If you go out there, Route 9 is elevated eight to, six to 10 feet above where the proposed coffee shop is. There's a steep slope up towards Route 9. And then, secondly, in its proximity to Park Street, proposing a driveway in such close proximity to Park Street could pose unsafe kind of merging and entering and exit traffic as well. It was considered, but the safer alternative for patrons of the, of the coffee shop is to kind of have this access off Park Street and giving them the option to go left or right, left towards Route 9 or right into Westboro, or towards Route 9, westbound, eastbound. It was considered, but this was kind of the layout that was chosen, both based on existing conditions as well as the tenant, what they, what they preferred. I will say, having a driveway would, would redesign really the whole site.
Realize that.
Yeah, and there's a transmission line of 50-foot-wide easement to the south of the site that kind of impacts the developable area out in front of the existing building. I will note that as well.
I have, hasn't have two entrances to Route 9 that close to each other as well.
I don't know if they could or not, but it just, it's an alternative that. Can I make? John Pressey, do you have any questions on this?
Could I just get an understanding of the special permit? Is it special permit because of the drive-through and the drive-through only?
I believe so, but Jenny?
Yes, so a restaurant use is allowed by right, the special permit.
Can you speak up, please? We can't hear you.
The, the restaurant use is allowed by right. The special permit is for the drive-through portion of the restaurant.
So if it's a restaurant use, how many, how big of a restaurant could you put on the site? I'm not saying what Starbucks wants to do, but
Yeah.
what if the owner wants to build, maximize the site?
Yeah, I, that's something that I, I was considering earlier today bringing up, but I figured I would not. But, so the existing building, 7,200 square feet plus or minus.
And with, I'm sorry, with how much parking today?
Yeah, so there's about 120 parking spaces onsite. So John theoretically, or any, if he sold it, or anyone who could theoretically occupy this building with a 7,200-square-foot restaurant, allowed use in the zone, and you could have upwards of 400 seats in the restaurant, which would be prototypical for a sized restaurant like a Texas Roadhouse or a Longhorn Steak Bed. Those are about 7,500 square feet, a Longhorn Steakhouse and stuff like that, that sized restaurant. But those are allowed as of right. And that's kind of, John and I and Starbucks think that this is, for the overall size of the property, which is 3.9 acres, about 50% of it is wetlands. So it's, it's about just under two acres of developable land, you'll call it. A lot of it is previously disturbed. The overall scale of the proposal is, is minimal for the size of the site, the zone, as well as the, the allowed uses in the highway business district.
And, and if you had a 400-seat restaurant, how would that affect the traffic that you're proposing for Starbucks? Would that be more traffic, would that be more traffic because it's a larger restaurant?
The peaks would be largely different. I could certainly get, run that kind of analysis for you. I don't know off the top of my.
I'm just curious to see, like, what's a by-right use? How that impacts what traffic could be compared to what you're proposing today?
Right.
Because my feeling, and I, I don't have any analysis backing it, is that the owner could develop this into a by-right restaurant, and the trafficking impact could be significantly higher than what's being proposed today.
But if you think about restaurant traffic, it's not all the in and out, right? You have fewer people probably throughout the day, but they stay longer, so a less of a, an impact on the road.
I, I personally don't think so, but I would be interested to just see, because I think at the end of the day, I mean, I think the concern is just traffic on Park Street.
So the fact that it's by-right does not alleviate the applicant, and first of all, we're discussing a hypothetical that isn't, isn't even in front of us, but the fact that a by-right restaurant could build there without getting a special permit for a drive-through does not alleviate the applicant's responsibility for safety for the neighbors.
No, that's not, that's not what I'm saying at all. I'm saying what?
So we would be looking at the same concerns with traffic, getting on and off the turn, Route 9, we'd be looking at the same concerns with traffic going up and down Park Street. We'd be, you know, worried about crosswalks in areas where there's no crosswalks that there should be. Now, whether it's this applicant's responsibility to put crosswalks in all over town, I don't know, but I do think when they're creating substantially new, I mean substantially new trips on Park Street, that they do have a responsibility to look at where, where the existing crosswalks are and aren't, and whether there needs to be improvements there.
If there are crosswalks.
And that doesn't, that's not, I mean, I don't, I would be asking the same thing if it was a site plan review.
No, I, I agree with crosswalks and everything like that. I just think it's to take it into perspective of what could be built.
It could be not even built, it could occupy the existing building.
That's, that's just my.
Could be through a building permit.
When I look at things, I know what's in front of us today, but the owner obviously is trying to monetize his site, and he can put other higher uses there, higher traffic uses potentially. That's just what I'm looking at.
Could I, could I make a quick comment to that point? Ultimately.
Sorry, did we get your name?
My name's John Nichols.
Okay, sorry.
Ultimately, what Sam just said is accurate. There is a restaurant building on the site with 120 parking spots. It's currently being used at an anemic state, probably 10 cars maximum at any point in time. So when you say it's adding trips, it's adding trips from the current use, but not from the permitted use. I don't even mean permitted, allowed for future use on a virgin site. I mean permitted use for what the building was permitted to be built for. So we're all looking at it like this is a massive increase in traffic only because my current operation is a very low traffic use, very low.
So, so you're saying then that Speedway Plaza could go back to becoming a Speedway without coming in here for, because it was a permitted use?
That is not what I'm saying.
Or the airport could go back to being an airport without coming back in here?
That's not what I'm saying.
I don't really care what the building was used for 50 years ago. I care what it's being used for now and what is being proposed here, right?
But that's not what I'm saying. I'm not saying you can turn a building into a racetrack. I'm saying you had, what was it, Stop &amp; Shop and BJ's in there, and now you have other tenants. This building exists. It's an existing building with existing parking. You, you know, I could run my leases out and a tenant comes along and says, we want to operate a restaurant there. I believe, I'm not a zoning expert, that the building department would issue a fit-up permit, and we're running a restaurant. They don't need to add parking, they don't need to add, I mean, that's, that is the existing use, or permitted use, so.
So then, next question.
But just let John.
No, but I'm sorry.
Just let him finish, would you please?
No, I understand the point, though, but my next question is, is after you build the Starbucks and you decide to go to building department to turn your building back into a restaurant.
We won't have the parking.
Are we going to have? Well, when you say you don't have parking, I've seen other businesses come in and get variances for parking, so I, I'm a little bit jaded on that, so, all right.
No, I mean, to your point, I, to your point, I have no idea how long my current tenants will be my current tenants. That's up to them. I don't operate their businesses, and I certainly would hope that if one of them leaves and a new tenant comes along that is a by-right tenant with, or maybe there's a variance, I don't, I don't know. I can't speak to that, and they look at what the parking requirements and the use at that point in time. I'm just saying that if you consider, it's similar to what happened with the sewer, you know? We were told that there wouldn't be enough sewerage, except that we have an allotted sewerage on the site that's, I don't know, it's like several hundred percent higher than what the current use is. So, you know, it's just ultimately, you know, and the other thing, to your point, I get it, yes, some people, instead of going down Milk Street, will come down Park Street. But it also means, if you're going to play a plus-minus game here, I assume that there's going to be a massive improvement from people turning across Route 9, going to Lyman Street, and then turning back across Route 9 to go back, you know, towards the Boston area, you know, headed east. So there's definitely going to be improvements and, you know, increases and decreases in the way people travel to and from different places. You have a tenant that's cutting, you know, traffic that people have to cross Route 9, and now they can stay on one side of the road. I, I would, and I'm not a traffic scientist or anything like that, but I would assume there's some positive to that. So it's, you know, it just kind of goes both ways.
I mean, I think at this point, we're looking at what's before us and not what could be.
I agree with that.
Or might be. So I think we need to, at this point, stick to the, what we've, the applicant has proposed for this particular site. John, did you get to the question?
Yeah, just to wrap up, my point is that, and I get we're going to focus on what's proposed, but what I'm trying to say is that it could be more.
Yeah, no.
And that's, I think everyone just needs to understand that. And obviously, there, if there's a, you know, peer review, traffic study, all that, great. If there's safety concerns, they need to be addressed, absolutely, but that's all I had to say.
If I could interject as well, I, I would disagree with the, the statement that although you are focusing on the proposal in front of you, as the planning board, it is a special permit, and you do have to take into consideration the, the neighborhood and the overall development and the impacts to the neighborhood. So to, to the planning board members' comment, I think it is appropriate to, to look at what this could be and think of that in a scale of the proposal and, and scale it back.
No, I, I understand John's point and based on that, and certainly is a reasonable request as to what the effect would be if there were a, of by-right
Use.
Use on this particular piece of property. So I think that, you know, it makes sense, obviously, to follow on that. I'd like to look at the parking, which I'm very concerned about.
Which slide would you like to look at?
On this parking.
Which would you, is this slide?
Within the site.
Okay.
Yeah, leave this. For one thing, you said you had 80 slots.
Yes, 80 spots.
But if I look at this and I count up the slots, at least for use by the restaurant, it comes out to about 37 parking spots. So you may have 80 way down in back, which has nothing to do with this project. I mean, nobody that's going to go to Starbucks is going to get down in the back below the building in order to park, to walk up, to get to the Starbucks. building in order to park, to walk up, to get to the Starbucks. So, you know, that's kind of useless parking, as far as I can see, and.
But that's for the business behind the building.
Right, exactly. So it, as you said, I count 37 parking spots, so that's.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't disagree with you if I could make a comment to that. I believe, so it's, the town requires one space per four seats. So with 65 proposed seats, and this is interior and exterior, it's still, if you were to kind of divide it out as you're speaking, it would still be compliant with the town's requirements for parking, regardless of where the spaces are located.
Can you go back to the parking lot?
The, the, yeah, this one?
Yeah, that one.
Okay.
I think it's a real safety hazard, quite frankly. We've got people driving around on the parking, they have to go around the building, and then they have to come down in front of the existing building, which is dentist's office at this point, and there are people that are going to be trying to cross from the parking lot where they parked their cars into that particular building. So you're having people come around and then go back out where your existing driveway is, and I had asked to look at, I'm not quite sure how you can reconfigure this, but I do feel it's a hazard as far as parking goes with the people from the drive-through coming across in front of the existing business, which actually has a lot of children that are using it. So I'm not quite sure how that can be refigured, but I, I'm just not happy with the safety aspects in that particular lot and the way it's conformed. I'm not quite sure how you can change it, but I just would like to see it looked at a little further because I think people pull out from getting their drink, all they're interested in is getting back out onto Park Street, back onto Route 9, and then you have other people that are trying to use the office building. So I do have a concern with that. As far as signage goes, are you going to have a sign on Route 9 or essentially signage on the green space so that people coming down on Route 9 are going to see a sign on where to turn? What is the plan on that?
You're talking about the building, like a tenant sign?
Well, I don't know.
Freestanding sign.
What are you going to do there?
The owner's intent is to, there's an existing pylon sign that, right now, I think it's Budget Blinds, Ampers Studio, which is no longer a tenant, and then the dentist's office below it.
And I think that sign is pretty tall.
It's 31 feet, and I think the zoning bylaws allow for 35. So it is under the zoning bylaw. But it is his intent to maintain the existing pylon and re-panel it with a, the coffee shop sign up top, and then the existing tenants below that. That was something that, I know just recently that the town passed a zoning article allowing the planning board to kind of waive or loosen some of the dimensional requirements, I believe, and signs as part of that. That is something that, in the original application, there wasn't a special permit submitted for that, but it is something that we're discussing. Obviously, larger signage, the bylaw allows for, I think, 100 square feet of signage on each side. Larger signage allows for people visibility, people to slow down, people to realize, oh, there's Starbucks 1,000 feet away. So that is something that we're going to explore and might be submitting additional material on that signage. But the intent is to utilize these existing pylon along Route 9.
And no new, no new freestanding monument signs?
There's no, not, they're not proposed, no.
I mean, I have basic concerns about the traffic coming down Route 9, seeing the sign for Starbucks, and all of a sudden, somebody slamming on their brakes and deciding they want to turn into Park Street. I do think it's going to be a more dangerous intersection, and I think that's something that, and, you know, what you're looking at are facts and are figures, which you're throwing into a program that's saying, okay, this is what we think would be the answer on it. I'm sorry, but I question those every time because I think you have to look at things practically. And if you drive Route 9 and you have some idea, like coming over that hill, and you come down the way, and all of a sudden, you're going to see this Starbucks sign, and to put on your brakes, because turning into Park Street because it is a narrow entrance is going to cause a hazard. And, you know, you can throw at me as many traffic studies as you want, but I'm just trying to look at this practically and how people actually use the road and the way they turn into Park Street. And I think this is going to cause serious problems, and I think that coming out, because you're not only going to have more traffic turning in, you're going to have more traffic turning out of Park Street. And consequently, I know what the speed limit is there. People do not pay attention to the speed limit, and it's dangerous to come out of Park Street onto Route 9 as it is, and when you're going to have more cars queuing there, and in the morning in particular, because of people traveling east towards Boston, what you're going to find is that your backup on Park Street is going to be much more than what any traffic consultant is going to tell us at this point, and it's going to back things all the way up, and you're going to have people coming out of Starbucks onto Park Street, and you're going to get a queue line there of people trying to get back on Route 9, and then you're going to have people coming off Route 9 to get into the Starbucks. And I just, quite frankly, see it as a real traffic hazard.
Yeah, if I could respond to some of those, just to, I do have some information, which is submitted in the traffic report, but.
It's the traffic report. I mean, as I said to you, it's, you have to look at these things in a practical matter.
Right.
Not just look at, okay, the traffic study says X, Y, Z. You know, we're the people that use these roads and have an idea of how to use them and the way they're being used, and that's different from a traffic study, as far as I'm concerned.
I could respond.
I'm just going to interrupt before you. I'm kind of thinking that right now as well, and I'm just thinking, we have Dunkin' on Main Street. That has, if I could estimate, a 12-car queue in the drive-thru. And so when it's really full, it goes out to the street, and that's, what, 12 cars, 13 cars? So this has a higher queue than that. And then you're turning right onto Main Street, which is during rush hour arguably just as busy as Route 9 in terms of speed and frequency of cars. And that's not terrible. And then you've got Lyman Street, sorry, not Lyman Street, the, by McDonald's, next to Bellows, the, whatever that little offshoot street is, by St. Mary's. You've got McDonald's, which is not as big as Starbucks or Dunkin', but it's a fast food, they do coffee, and that's an entrance onto Route 9, and that's usually not a nightmare. So I just, I don't know. I think it's going to be really bad in the first few months because everyone's excited about Starbucks, and then it's going to go back to normal because everyone's used to the Starbucks, and then people are going to figure out how to get on the road.
But just one, but the speed on at Dunkin' isn't.
No, but you're still trying to enter into that and into that roadway with cars coming.
People are also able to, like, stop and stop traffic.
Right. But then, you know, we enter Route 9 from these types of driveways all the time, and you see how cars are coming, and you kind of time it. So I think it's going to be bad in the first, you know, few months, the first three months, because everyone's going to be going to the new Starbucks, and it's a drive-thru, I'm going to change my morning routine. But then people are going to lose interest in it, and it's going to get back to a normal cycle, which is going to be like Dunkin' and McDonald's. I, I think there's a lot of space for queuing. I think there's some issues with the traffic circulation. I think if there's, you know, 12 cars that can fit on Park Street to turn onto Route 9, that's probably going to be enough to sort out any backup issues. I'm more concerned with the onsite queuing, just because of Hazel's comment about the circulation, so I can address that later, but I don't want to take over this comment. But I just wanted to point that out.
Go ahead, I'll finish.
Okay.
I, one, one response to, to that, and thinking about those locations. So the Dunkin' Donuts, I would assume is much more local traffic, people who are there consistently, given its proximity, it's not on a, you know, main transit road, right? Versus a Route 9 where you see a Starbucks, and even if you're not adding much to the volume, I think the, the consistent number of, like, net new people who haven't done that would be much higher than at a place where it's downtown, right? And it's people who are kind of more aware of the traffic.
Yeah, and I think that will account for some of the traffic issues.
Can you add some other questions?
Yes, I'm just going to, I guess, still talk about the traffic because we're on it. So to Hazel's point with crossing in front of the existing business, I could just see that being a problem if it's busy. You've got a line trying to get out onto Park Street to turn left onto Park to go onto Route 9, and then the queue forms along that driveway with the tree in front of the business. And now I'm somebody who's got an 8:30 dentist appointment, and I'm coming up on Park Street towards Route 9, and I can't access that driveway. Or I can access the driveway, but the only way I can get through the site is to go through the drive-thru lanes because somebody's blocking that entrance right there. I'm wondering, it's, it's kind of annoying, but I'm wondering if there's a way to route the traffic around the building to then come up the southern side and then exit through that, basically make that turn, right? Down here on the bottom, and then take the right where the blue car is, to then either take the left or the right. Instead of crossing in front of the existing business, potentially blocking pedestrian access and car access for those businesses and just looping it around.
I don't think you can do that with the pickup window where it is.
Why not? You can come out.
How is that blue car going to make it around the building?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I, my basic thing is I really would like them to look more at how to reconfigure this parking lot because that is a real concern to me about people going into the office building.
If I may.
Can I just make a quick comment on your comment about what you're talking about, getting into the existing building? First of all, it's a very small number of people. But second of all, it is such a common way of doing things where if you just go out to the Tractor Supply Mall, none of the parking is near the building. You have two-lane road running in front of the building. I mean, you could go around to, I bet 90% of the retail buildings that you do not have the ability to pull up like what we have at the Starbucks and pull right up to the front door. There's shoppers' world in Framingham. You, every single one of those businesses have a two-lane road with constant traffic.
I understand that aspect. I mean, I'm, I'm just thinking about how people use a drive-up window. Use your drive-up window, you get your thing, you put your foot on the gas, and you go forward. That's all I'm saying, is that, you know, you may have to put, you could put a stop line near something. I mean, you could do something.
There is a stop line there.
And, you know, you make sure, I might move it down slightly, but as I said, I'm just, the way, the configuration, the traffic, I'm concerned about from a safety viewpoint.
I'll just say one other thing. I've looked at this site for hundreds of hours as to how to configure this, and there really is no better way. I've probably got 35 other renditions before this one. And to do, to get the seven cars from the drive-up window to the order point with all of the additional, plus a bypass, which is not actually required by the tenant, but they do prefer it, is that required in the town, the town bylaws? I'm not sure, but, you know, we have the bypass, which is helpful. It allows people to get in the line and say, oh gee, I didn't think it was going to take this long. I'm just going to spin around, and I'm going to park, and I'm going to go in, or whatever. It alleviates some of those issues. To send the people, even if we could, around the back of the building and around, I think that would be so circuitous that it would just be, and, you know, those hills are relatively steep. I don't think you really want all of the Starbucks traffic driving up and down and up around the back of the building.
It's not ideal, and.
It's not ideal.
And I'm wondering, because I'm just trying to avoid clogging up that, like, central access point. Because that's the concern.
If I could interrupt, so the, the drive-through queue figure that's shown here, in the traffic queue analysis that we performed, the maximum queue we saw at five operational Starbucks was 11 vehicles in the AM peak. So just to put that into perspective.
That's not the queue I'm worried about.
No, I understand. I'm going to, I'm going to speak to all of it. So that queue, put into perspective, that's, the 11th vehicle's here. There's ample room here for additional queuing. To the chairperson's point regarding safety of the existing facility, I think that's a valid comment, and I think that's a concern that I think John and I can address. Obviously, this parking, which is, was discussed as the 37 spaces, I think, that is obviously going to be utilized most by the coffee shop patrons. So that would largely put a lot of the dental office patrons back here, and I think that's what you were speaking on, the queue exiting the site, potentially backing up and impacting those vehicles, or those parking spaces, excuse me. I think a potential solution to the safety concerns would be to add maybe a sidewalk to basically pull the patrons off of the drive aisle, which John was speaking to is a standard site design to most commercial buildings, but I think additional safety is not something we should go against. And maybe an additional sidewalk with potentially a crosswalk in this location so people could very easily, oh, if I'm going to the dental office, I'll park in one of these spaces or these six spaces over here, access the sidewalk and the crosswalk and hit the existing office building, as opposed to dealing with the queuing and the drive-through, and it really eliminates that. Now, the, this was actually a comment discussed at the select board meeting. It wasn't one of the comments in the letter that was submitted, I don't believe, but it was discussed. So the maximum queue we've observed on, on operational Starbucks, 11 vehicles. Obviously, we have 14 spaces in the drive-through queue and then additional queuing if they're, in the event that there was something similar to like COVID, when, when everything was drive-through oriented and businesses shut down or something like that. That's when you saw the maximum queues of 20, 30 vehicles. Chick-fil-A probably had 60 vehicles. In a situation like that, there would most likely be, similar to Chick-fil-A, having some, a worker in, in the parking facility operating kind of the drive-through would be something I would assume this, this facility would implement. But the select board did mention potentially painting this area as like a do-not-block box. You see it on roadways sometimes.
Yeah, I think that'd be a smart idea.
It's a painted hatch. It's, it's a very simple implementation and with signage that it could alleviate the concerns of the drive-through queue blocking and all of that, the comments that were, and if anyone's, I'm talking about this area here, there could be a striping that is basically a do-not-block. So if you were queued up to exit the site, you would basically stop before that, and then the drive-through could bypass in between.
I mean, the other thing that I might suggest is that in the, since you cut it down to one entrance and exit.
Yeah, in existing conditions, there's three. There's one here, which is very.
Yeah, those, you've taken those away.
Correct.
There's one entrance and exit.
Driveway.
Driveway.
Correct.
I would suggest you think about widening that and putting a grass strip down the center so you divide more the ingress and the egress, which I think might be a little better as far as traffic coming in and out, because that is not terribly wide, and if there's some way you could make that a wider entrance and exit with a, you know, a grass strip down the middle between, it might be something to just think about as far as the ease of people getting into and then people getting back out onto Park Street might be a better way to deal with that.
I think that's something that we could certainly, it might not be grass, it could be like a brick divider.
Well, just something that, you know, made it really divided there because, you know, you get a lot of cars coming back and forth like this, which makes, but if you can divide them more, it certainly might.
It would also, I suppose, you're, if you, the concern is if the queue was at the 14th vehicle and the 15th vehicle was potentially, there'd be enough room. That's what your concern is.
Yeah, exactly.
I think that's a great comment.
My only concern with that, as much as I like the idea overall, we did add what is basically a painted line, the thick black line, but the further we come, the further we move the entrance. But the further we come, the further we move the entrance towards Route 9, the more issues you have with the queue. And the further you come away from Route 9, you start creating a problem with where you are with that lower island. So it's-
Okay, well, I'd really like you to look at that, because I think that would make a difference.
Along with the potential for, you know, large trucks coming in there, whether it's, I don't care what hour it is, you start having raised islands, I think we run into a potential big problem.
Well, all right.
John, I think, so-
You just-
If it was like a mount- A rumble strip? Yeah, a rumble strip could work.
It's kind of like a mountable curb, so that was a-
Well, I don't know. As I said, I'd like to see a wider ingress and egress there.
We can look at that, for sure.
Like a stamped brick?
Or is that-
Yeah, that's, yeah, like a mountable brick that divides the two entrances.
Something that made a difference there. Mark, you have a comment?
Well, I realize there's a lot of people here.
Right.
I still haven't finished my questions.
But I never really got to ask all my questions, and I know we've spent a lot of time on traffic and ingress and egress and all of that, but a couple other issues I wanted to address. You have a dumpster location at the northern side. There's an existing dumpster along the southern side of the lot, right next to the residential homes that are down there. Is that going away, or are you planning on two dumpsters?
The plan would be no. The plan would be it would not go away.
So you're gonna have two dumpsters on the site? They, Starbucks can't share the dumpster with-
It wasn't the plan.
They need their own dumpster.
Okay, well, I'm asking if it could be the plan.
I would think that-
I suppose it could be, but I would think in reality it would be a negative. I guess anything could be, but I would prefer not to, no. I have tenants in the back that have a lot of cardboard, they, you know, they would now be walking up and around the hill, and it doesn't seem ideal for the operation. I've never had a complaint about the dumpsters once, so I don't really know why it would be an issue, but I'm just-
Okay, I mean, if it's not an issue for the neighbors, then I'm not gonna push The B-Walt trail, could you bring up that concept and explain to us what your proposal is for the trail easement?
We aren't proposing anything at the moment, but I can speak to it. So, and I have a feeling that the butter comments will lead to this anyway, but the 25% B-Walt design, I've taken a look at the feasibility study, as well as the original concept, which proposed going up Park Street as opposed to along Route 9. But this site is kind of a point of interest for the town for the B-Walt. The 25% design proposes it along the northern property line, along Route 9, and then down the right-of-way of Park Street. In speaking with the town, this is roughly a few years away from being potentially constructed, pending funding as well. But at the moment, the project doesn't propose any improvements for this, nor is it associated with the B-Walt. There was a request from the planning department to show a proposed easement. As a design professional, I didn't think it was appropriate for the time due to the flux, the status of this project, as well as, this is a site plan that is before the planning board for potential approval or denial. Showing proposed easements that are kind of in flux at the moment is not ideal or really warranted. But this is, this is the proposed design, and our, the owner is willing to work with the town on this. We sent a slew of comments to GM2, the town's town engineer. We've received some responses, as well as the planning department is responding back to a couple of the comments as well.
Yeah, I don't understand that comment so much because when Hyundai came in, they showed the easement, it was a condition of their approval, I think. When CarMax came in, it was a condition of their approval. So I'm just unclear, I mean, even the 161 Milk Street, it was a condition of their approval. So this is kind of a historical request that we're not, you know-
That doesn't move to.
You know, I'm just, I'm not asking for them to build anything, but we would, we would want to establish a location across the site and obtain the easements as part of this.
So we haven't seen the design across the full site. That has not been provided to the applicant. And the proposal before the board is, I know it's a point of interest for the planning department, the town, the Trails Committee, who there was a gentleman at the site walk as well. But it is separate projects, and we are willing to work on this until we have a full design of the trail and final location of it. This is 40% of the property.
Well, I think, I think in the past, we've worked with the applicant to figure out where they would want the easement, as opposed to us saying, you have to put it here, right? Like, that's kind of what we're looking to establish.
I don't believe there's been any eminent domain associated with the B-Walt, right?
No, I believe there-
No, no, we'd be looking at an easement, but-
Right. So I mean, John's preferred location would be having it to the north of his property within the state right-of-way, right?
In the state right-of-way?
Yeah. And that was one of the comments that we submitted back to the planning department regarding the proposed location.
Can I ask why it needs to be in the state right-of-way?
That's the only location that, between the driveway and the, up here, is-
Okay.
And this is something that's in flux, and I don't want to muddy the waters of this application with the B-Walt, but it, there's a very, there's a lot to work through with this property. There's a significant grade change, associated with which I spoke to earlier regarding Route 9 to the proposed development. With the proposed design, there's gonna be retaining walls, and John had concerns and discussed it with the planning department regarding maintenance, installation, safety of that. And we spoke regarding patrons near a drive-through for the businesses. That was a point of concern for the owner as well regarding proposing a walking trail or bike path kind of adjacent to a drive-through as well. So that's something that we're certainly working with the planning department with, but it's, it's a 25% design. I also don't necessarily think, and John would agree with this, that it'd be the burden of the applicant to design the portion of the B-Walt on his property, regardless of large developments, if they've done that previously or not.
Is there an area that you'd prefer, Mark?
Well, I, yes, but I think the wetlands will make it impossible. You know, I mean, ideally, I'm not a fan of the B-Walt going, taking a right turn, going up to Route 9, and then coming back, you know, taking a left turn to come back down to Meadow, and then taking a right turn to go back up. I mean, I'd like to see it go straight through, but, and I honestly feel like if we can build pyramids, we should be able to build a boardwalk through some wetlands. But I am not on Concom. I'm not, you know, the state who's responsible for the interchange with Milk Street and Route 9. I think as a town, we have to look at what we can feasibly do, and I do think that the feasible route is to go where that green strip is. When you say in the state right-of-way, I'm not sure I want to see it at the level of Route 9, given the grade changes. I'm not clear how that's gonna be physically feasible. I know you've talked about-
It's much lower right down there.
Yeah, I, I think there are a lot of problems with that, and I really, you know, don't want to get off on the B-Walt at this particular time. We've got a lot of people waiting to discuss this, so-
And if I could, and just one final comment.
Sure.
All those questions are kind of the questions we pose to the planning department as well. I know there's been a significant amount of money and feasibility studies that have been performed for this project. This is obviously a point that John has great interest in, and we do as well as the engineers, so we're gonna be working with the town to kind of come up with that. But at this time, it's, there's just a lot in question, really, to propose an easement that would potentially be approved and recorded at the registry. I don't, it's not appropriate at the moment. I mean, John's open to working with the town to get this path through his property. We haven't even seen plans for the entire property. There's a significant wetlands that needs to be crossed, whether it's on Route 9, right, over culverts that exist, or kind of further into the property, and to your point, could be like a boardwalk type thing. That's kind of, it hasn't been shown to us, so we're waiting on that, and we're working with the town on it.
Mark, did you have any other comments?
I think that's it for now.
Okay. All right, I'd like to open this, I'm sorry, John, you have a question?
I only got to ask the one question. I don't get to ask the rest of my questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
All right. I'll try and make this quick. So can you go to the, yeah, that's fine. I'm assuming the, where it's, the change from what's the aerial to what's clearly drawn is the limit of work, or at least similar to the limit of work?
Plus or minus, yeah.
What are the plans for access to the existing businesses? Are you going to fence off a sidewalk? Is there going to be any kind of barrier between the construction area and parking and the entrance? Like, how is that gonna be handled?
Yeah, so as part of the plan set, we did submit a soil erosion set of control plan, which is also a phased kind of demolition plan. We are proposing to basically maintain this drive aisle throughout construction. It would be impacted when it's paving operations and such like that. And then there, the construction fence would allow kind of a sidewalk to the front entrance of the building. John, and actually was speaking with his existing tenant today about it.
How long do you think that's gonna last?
Typically, construction of this, they go up rather quick, four to six months. I mean, the, I would say four to six months, the site will be substantially complete with pavement and back to basically normal operations. I don't know if the Starbucks specifically would be open in that time period, because they do have to fit out the inside of plumbing fixtures and architectural features as well.
I'd like to see more trees on the site. I always think site plans could use more trees, more plantings, just to make it a little bit more lush. Is there any space that you can find to plant a couple more trees?
I think with the potential modifications of the driveway, we could potentially continue and add a couple trees along the Park Street right-of-way in the southern portion of the site. Obviously, the B-Walt, we kind of avoided any plantings along the northern property line.
I would imagine that would impact site distance as well.
That, and we just didn't want to plant them next year and potentially have them ripped out in 2027. So it was considered. We can certainly look at-
Yeah, I just think, site plan, you know, whenever we have site plans, they try and do these very nice evenly spaced things, but then you look at Amazon, and it's got these tiny little trees with this huge open space, and to have more trees and more vegetation, I always think makes things nicer, so just more aesthetic than anything else, and it'll probably help with your stormwater as well. And then the final question is really more for the board. Does our review board have jurisdiction over this? No?
No.
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. If there are no more questions for the board at this time, I'd like to open this up to the public for any comments. I ask that you keep your comments to two minutes or less, please, and I know there were a number of letters that have been sent, which we all have had access to, which are part of the record, and so I don't think we need to keep repeating the same thing. So I would appreciate it if you have a question or a comment to raise. Try to keep it to something which has not been covered either by the planning board or in letters, and move forward from there. So I would ask you, when you come up, to please spell your name, as we have trouble with the TV telling who people are without spelling the names, because the acoustics in this particular room are very poor, which I think we're all aware of. So I'd like to open this to public comment. And which microphone are we gonna use? Can we use the one at the-
That one should work right there.
Oh, okay, great.
Could you put up the site plan that has the queuing? That'd be great. Can I use your pen?
Okay.
I have one as well.
My name is Wayne, W-A-Y-N-E Webster, W-E-B-S-T-E-R, 3 Essex Way, here in Westboro. First off, I have no problem with Starbucks, no problem with a commercial application, that's what it's zoned for. However, I think a Starbucks at this location is a bit of a problem. You have my letter, and I won't go through all of that again. What becomes apparent in these sort of events, in these sort of hearings, when it's something brand-new, what we're dealing with is speculation about what's gonna happen. We really don't know. I sat on a seminar board in Melrose, Massachusetts, and over 20 years probably heard and read 100 traffic studies. I never read one that said, wow, this is gonna be a mess. Every one of them said, well, it's 140 cars, you know, at rush hour, it's really not gonna add to the problem. And the example I'm gonna give you of the problem is an intersection that had heavy rail for commuting, a main thoroughfare, and the heavy rail crossed that street and stopped on that street, and elementary school and shops. So you can imagine at morning rush hour and evening rush hour, the way you got across the street was you walked on the cars. Somebody proposed a 70-unit apartment building in that locus, and what happened was, the traffic study was done, and they said it wouldn't cause any problem, because it couldn't get any worse. And so when we look at this and we see, well, 40 entrances and exits, what I want you to do is look here, if I can do this. Here's number one. Here's number seven, okay? So let's say 10 cars, just 10 cars, right here on Park Street. We have one ingress and egress here. People don't do what they showed in the site plan, which is to come to the stop sign and stop, because you really can't see up and down Park Street. So what they do, you look and you pull out, and you get halfway across the lane, and now we're backing up people coming in off of Route 9, people coming up from Milk Street are getting backed up. If you go out on this during rush hour, what you do is you basically watch for the timing of the light back here, because you can sit here waiting for that light to change, and you can sit for five to seven, almost 10 minutes, waiting to get-
Mr. Webster, your two minutes are just about up. Can you-
I'm sorry?
Your two minutes are up at this particular time. Are you representing the homeowners association at Walker Meadow?
Yes, I am, at Walker Meadow, yeah.
All right, well, then I will give you an extra two minutes because of that.
Okay, thank you. I'll be, I'll be quick. The point being, the traffic's a mess. You've all spoken to that. I did agree completely about what happens down on Milk Street if people start going to park, getting out there at rush hour is also very difficult. But if you look at the ingress and the egress here, we have one. Here, right across the street, is where the rail trail's gonna go. And as far as the 25% plan, that's what the town's told us where it's gonna go. And I think when we look out at three years and say, well, it's three years away, part of your job is to make sure that we're looking out three or five years, 10 years away, and we're not adding something that complicates issues tremendously. Park Street is a country lane. It's the same size it was as it was in 1900, except it has hot tub now. And we see very few cars on it, very, very few, and this will really complicate things for us. And I think for all of the residents in that area, whether it's Stagecoach or the other homes in the area, it's gonna be very difficult. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else, sir?
Thank you. My name is Daniel, D-A-N-I-E-L-Politica, P-O-L-I-T-I-C-A. I live at 9 Shaker Way in Westboro, which is right down the street from here. I have just three points to make, but before I do that, I'd like to apologize to the board if I'm redundant in what I say. I've heard a lot of conversation, but with 83-year-old ears, I sometimes had a little difficulty putting definition to those conversations. Okay. My home in Walker Meadow, the back wall is about 50 feet from the pavement, beginning on Park Street. That back wall is my master bedroom. Point number two- Point number two, I've heard the intersection of Route 9 and Park Street referred to as an intersection. It is not. It is a high-speed exit off of Route 9 with cars generally going between at least 40 to 60 miles an hour, making a last-second decision to turn onto Park Street, and in many instances, entering into the northbound flow of traffic on Park Street. It is a nightmare now under the best of times. Third point I'd like to make, I haven't heard anybody reference this, is that many times a day, there are school buses on Park Street, and I think this needs to be part of the consideration regarding traffic and increased traffic possibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
My name is Arthur Giordano. I live on Ashley Way, which connects to Wessenville, which connects to Park Street. So I'm a resident of the general area. If you have not lived in this area, you are unfamiliar that how dangerous the intersection is at Park Street and Route 9. If you want to go, as Wayne had mentioned, if you want, if I'm leaving on Park Street and I want to go east on Route 9 to take a right, I have to wait for the traffic light to stop traffic at the Arcade Speedway Plaza, a mile or so down the road on Route 9. So you can't make a right until that traffic stops. And that's not just peak hours, that's almost all the time. Secondly, if you're going to come east on Route 9 and take a right onto Park Street, that's a very dangerous thing to do. It's not an easy entrance point. You have to actually stop almost to take that right-hand turn with somebody behind you doing at least 55 miles an hour, which is legal. I never take that right. I always stop and take a right before that intersection on 135, go up Milk Street, and then take a left on Park Street, because it's a much safer thing to do than try to take that right-hand turn onto Park Street from Route 9. Park Street right now is a neighborhood street. As Wayne mentioned, it has very light traffic. And it's really there, it really uses, it's useful for the local residents. That's where most people use the street for. It's not intended to be a throughway. So it's really an issue of anybody that wants to take a right on Route 9, from Route 9 to Park Street, that's really terrible. In fact, the state really should put a no right-hand sign there so you couldn't take a right-hand turn. It's really dangerous. That's mostly what I want to mention, but there is a little bit I saw in the traffic description that was proposed by Soli Engineering. If you've been to any Starbucks places anywhere, you can see at least seven employees that are full-time busy every minute of the day, taking people that have already ordered and come in to grab their coffee and go out again. I think it's continuous traffics. There's no peak traffic, it's continuous. So I see that as a serious issue. It's going to really increase the traffic on Park Street. But my biggest concern is the collisions and accidents that are going to occur at that intersection.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Phyllis Jaffe, J-A-F-F-E-E, 9 Quaker Way. I've been in town 44 years, and I've been at Walker Meadow for eight. And prior to those eight years, I used Park Street as a cut-through. And I know in rush hour traffic, you can't even get out of Park Street. You have to wait for someone to let you out. What bothers me also is that you've talked about AM and PM, but to repeat what Art just said, there's traffic all day. Starbucks is going to have traffic all day. They're going to generate traffic all day. And as Art also said, I judge whether I'm going to turn onto Park Street when I'm down at the light, way down at Speedway Plaza. If there's traffic at Speedway Plaza, I turn at 135, because I don't dare try to turn at Park Street, because I'm scared to death of getting rear-ended. You come over that hill, and people behind you don't know that there's a turn there, and I'm just waiting for someone to get killed one of these days. Number of people who live off of Park Street, and it's much faster to come down Park Street, turn at 135 because of that dangerous intersection. And what's going to happen, too, is we're not talking about Milk Street. Even tonight, coming here, I had to wait at Milk Street about five minutes to be able to turn left to come into town, because of the traffic at the other end of Park Street. Milk Street's not a whole lot better. So the backup that's going to occur during rush hour in the morning is going to be untenable. And if someone from Wessenville Road comes out and wants to get to Route 9 to go to a doctor's appointment, they're not going to get there. It's just a horror scene.
Hi, my name is Hank Rauch, R-A-U-C-H. I live at 5 Ashley Way. I'm a resident in Walker Meadow. I'm seriously concerned about, I understand that the owner of the land has a right to try and make a profit off it, to pay his taxes. He has a right to run a business there. However, I'm seriously concerned about the traffic control in the area. I'm on Park Street, either going to Route 9 or to Milk Street every day. If I have to avoid going to Route 9, because there's an enormous traffic jam there all the time, I can live with that. However, I can't live with all that traffic on Park Street going what I believe would be southbound on Park Street out to Milk Street. So if there's some way to put traffic control there, prevent a right-hand turn coming out of that exit, keep the traffic off of Park Street, at least the people who live in that area can get out of their homes, get out to Milk Street, get to 135, get to the center of town. We got, I mean, to me, I don't know the answer, I'm not a traffic engineer, but we have to do something to allow the developer to run a business, but at the same time, we have to control the traffic. So I'm looking to the planning board to help us control the traffic going out of there. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak to this project?
My name is Andrea Burdick. I live at 11 Essex Way in Walker Meadow. Is there some way we could change the slides so that it shows the view from Route 9? Yes, okay. Just a little bit further down the street, a lane is lost. In other words, if I, we don't have to be in the right lane ahead of time, because we know that right lane's going to drop off. So we can stay in the middle of that lane, because that's soon to become the right lane. So what I'm saying is, that's a particularly narrow part of Route 9 to begin with. Then when you look at Park Street, that is, when you showed the other map, that is more narrow than the driveways within the parking lot where they're proposing to build this. I don't think it has anything to do with, is there room for a coffee shop there? I think everyone would agree that would be nice. But the problem is, this is going to not just be a coffee shop, this is going to be Starbucks. And we're talking a huge amount of traffic. I've never seen a Starbucks that, you know, didn't generate a huge amount of traffic. The other thing I wanted to say is going back to, the last time I was here, it was because there was going to be a car place. It isn't there yet, but I don't know if it's going to come or if it isn't. But if that comes, too, we were talking at that time about being unhappy about car carriers. And, you know, how are they going to get to this place and everything? So I'm just seeing it as, how much can you put on the same little corner of huge, you know, a huge amount of traffic plus, you know, vehicles that are almost a block long? So what I'm saying is, that hasn't even happened yet. And it's already dangerous, just because of the increase in traffic. So those are the points I wanted to make.
Thank you very much. Just before we continue, I would like to, we are not going to end this hearing tonight. It will be continued to December, so there will be further opportunities for people to make comments. And in the meantime, I think the applicant will probably see if he can tweak his drawings in some way, and we can talk more about traffic. But anyone, anyone else would like to speak tonight?
My name is Ken Kelly, K-E-L-L-Y, 10 Hancock Way. I live in Walker Meadow. I share all the concerns that have been expressed about that intersection and how dangerous it is, but I have a different issue to suggest. My hope is that Soli Engineering has been collaborating very closely with the B-Walt Trail Group, that because the intersection of Part 2 and Part 3 of the B-Walt Trail occurs right at that corner. And what I'd like to suggest, and what I did in my letter to the group, is to move on the far left, have the B-Walt Trail come down in back of the other building that's already there, right next to the wetlands, and come up the south side of the parking lot, and miss all the in and out that's going to be going on at that intersection, and cross the street just south of that. And then they'll go north for a few steps and then go onto the B-Walt Trail. That, I think, is both a much safer approach for the pedestrians, bicyclists, and so on, who will be using B-Walt, but also a much nicer one, because it puts them next to wetlands. There's a grassy area in the northwest corner that they can use to take a rest, and so that's my concern. Be talking to them, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do you mean to come this way, or do you mean to still go the way they're going and then down?
John, I can.
I'd like to clarify on what you meant.
I could show you.
Okay. From, sorry. Okay, within the yellow, within the yellow, you see the wetlands are the brown. Just east of the brown, at the west end, right there of the parking lot, yeah, have them come down through there and then east, and route it that way. It's much safer, it'll be nicer for the folks using it, and I think you'll get a lot more positive reactions from that.
You might have to move that other dumpster, though.
Thank you very much.
There's room to put that, that's not a problem.
Is there anyone else that'd like to comment tonight?
Hi, Linda Monahan, M-O-N-A-H-A-N. I live on Park Street, not far from this area. I'm the last house just before this shop that's proposed. As everyone here is concerned, the traffic is very, seriously needs to be considered, not only from the Park Street corner and Route 9, but I know someone mentioned earlier, there was no study with the Milk Street side. That's bothersome, because living there every day, traveling Park Street to go to work, I directly go onto Route 9. I witness it every single day. The cars that come down from Milk Street, they go through our street, we're a pass-through. They go fast. So any cars that are going to be coming out, they could be impacted with these cars that are speeding down Park Street to get to Route 9 access. One thing I did not understand that, well, I do understand, but one comment I have is the drive-through, the amount of cars that are going to be allowed to wait in a drive-through, is up to 14 cars. There was no discussion of how many cars were going to be waiting to get outside of the parking lot to exit onto Park Street. To me, the same amount of cars could be in that same line to get out, either going left or right on Park Street, which would be further back up on Park Street to exit to Route 9 and/or to take the right onto Park Street. There's no mention of, there was really no mention of vehicles going down Park Street consistently throughout the day, and that's going to be, that is going to increase more in my mind, because once people hear of Starbucks being here, they're no longer going to go to the other Starbucks, because then they don't have to go through downtown traffic to get to it. Oh, let's go to the one on Park Street. So all those, all those folks that are going to the current Starbucks are going to deviate, go right through to Park Street. So that population is going to increase.
Thank you very much.
I do want to mention one thing about this. I appreciate everybody here. You all had your questions, and we did not have the opportunity to ask questions. I found while I was sitting there, I wanted to speak up and ask questions. I sat and I listened, and I have questions. When can I have my questions answered? I understand I have two minutes at this point, but there's a lot on my list here that I would like to talk about in question.
I would suggest that you write a letter to the planning board to cover those. And as I said, we will be having more hearings on this, but I think that the letters are being passed on to the applicant, and we, as a planning board, will be reading the letters.
Okay.
Okay?
Thanks.
Can I just also note that her comment about, we didn't discuss queuing on-site, trying to exit onto Park Street. We did discuss that.
We did discuss that.
Earlier in the meeting, so we are looking into that.
Hazel, can I just say, while he's getting up, in the past, we've had applicants write written responses to questions that were sent to us by email. So if you do submit those, we'll definitely follow up on it. Jenny will make a point of it, and if not, we'll see them all, and we'll make a point of asking those at the next meeting.
I'll be very brief. My name is Phil McDowell. I live at 9 Quaker Way. I want to suggest you start thinking outside the box, because it seems to me that the one thing that you haven't discussed was widening Park Avenue. Is it Park Avenue or Park Street? Park Street. I know the owner doesn't own Park Street, but he could give up some property, and it might relieve this problem. Not cure it, but it might go a long way. So think about that.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to comment this evening? All right, are there any other comments from the planning board tonight? Otherwise, no.
Just a question, do we have to request a vote on a peer review, or is that something that?
If the board would like to request a traffic peer review, then you would just all need to come to a consensus.
I'd like to make a motion that we require a traffic peer review.
Second.
Any question or comments?
I have a question.
Yes, please.
We did have a pre-application meeting with the town engineer, the building commissioner, I believe the director of economic development, planning staff as well. We obviously have been issued a peer review for the stormwater and site plan. The town engineer's opinion, correct me if I'm wrong, Jenny, but was that she didn't believe that this warranted a traffic study and left it up to the board. Just the delay in review is something that, I mean, this was submitted in early October.
Yeah, she had no opinion on the traffic review, though. She was leaving it up to the board. So typically, it's the board's discretion to require the peer review. We've changed recent procedures to allow the decision to be made at the time of application.
Okay. In the past, just from my understanding, and John's as well, because this is going to be an expense of the applicant, have there been other developments of this size, just a standalone quick-service restaurant that required?
The other Starbucks had a peer review.
Right, but that's a Burger King and a convenient MD, correct?
I think quite often, we ask for a peer review.
I'm just trying to understand.
Particularly on traffic, which, when it's a real issue, which it is with this particular development.
Could I make a quick comment? It sounds as though you people don't actually care about what the traffic studies say. I've heard. I've heard many of you say that they mean nothing.
No, but I think we also have an obligation to the community, and to do a traffic study, particularly since this is the main reason that people have raised comments about this issue.
I understand, however, I think I spent over $10,000 on a traffic study that I was told was basically a waste of money, and now you're saying we should do another one. After I was told that they don't mean anything, and you've never seen one that said that there was a problem, my assumption is if we do peer review, they'll say there's all sorts of problems. So it sounds as though we're basically just throwing money away to kind of play ping-pong with different people's opinions.
Mark, you wouldn't count it?
Well, yeah, so I actually would like the peer review to specifically be tasked with examining the, not just this scope of this, but also examining the Milk Street, East Main Street, which was not covered in the original peer review.
So you're saying?
I mean, in the original traffic.
You're saying expand the traffic study to include that intersection?
Yeah, I, I'm saying expand it, right?
Now.
Because I don't think, I don't know who told you that you didn't have to do the intersection of Park Street and Milk Street, but, you know, was that just your decision?
Yeah, so it's not, it's not like I just walked out there and said, we'll do this one. But it is.
Oh, I know, I'm just trying to figure out.
Yeah, there's standard.
Why that wasn't, that intersection wasn't included.
Right, I think it's the proximity to the site. Within standard engineering.
In a certain amount of.
Standard engineering practices, you do intersection that directly in proximity to the site, as well as directly impacted by the site. Our initial review of the traffic counts in this area, as well as the anticipated trip distribution of the network, the intersection that we analyzed was the Park Street and Turnpike Road. Now, I.
But we've discussed this already tonight. The pass-by traffic, right, on a standalone site with frontage on Route Nine is different than traffic that's going to turn onto Park Street.
I guess that.
Can I, can I, hold on, can I just interrupt? So my understanding, to answer your question, peer reviews, the peer review engineer reviews the methodology, makes sure that all the math is correct, everything was done properly, and then we assess it that way. I would assume any peer review engineer worth their salt is going to look at this study and say, if that intersection needs to be included in this analysis, then they, that's going to be a comment they're going to make to the applicant, to say, why was this intersection not included in the analysis? So I think that will be covered if the engineer decides, you know, the engineer reviewing on town's behalf, they decide this is an important intersection that should be assessed, and that will be part of the letter.
Right, and do they also look at, you know, I think I brought up before, the crossing on Park Street from where the sidewalk goes?
They're going to, so my understanding is they're going to look at.
Is that covered in a traffic study?
They're going to look at how the traffic study, based on industry standards, should be set up, and these are the intersections, these are the standards that we use to determine which intersections are going to be assessed, and they're going to use this industry standard protocol for reviewing this, that would be the same as if they were preparing the traffic study themselves.
And this, the traffic study was, it's compiled and analyzed in conformance of MassDOT standards, it's, it's not.
I think the other thing is that we have a right, as a planning board, to ask them to look at specific things that may not have been included in the other traffic studies. So I think that's what we're looking at at this point, is that there may be some, some other issues which the traffic study should look at, as far as the peers' traffic goes.
But I think, Hazel, I think that's the same as, to Mark's comment, is if, if the peer review engineer.
Right.
Looks at and says, this is something that should be included in this review, I'm going to make a comment that it should be included in the review.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I just, again, I, there's a paragraph here in the executive summary that says recommendations, but they don't make any recommendations. They just say, well, it's our opinion, there's no adverse impact on the nearby intersections that they defined previously as the driveway and the Park Street, Route Nine. But I, you know, I can't understand how we can't look at the length of Park Street down to Milk Street and not conclude that there's going to be some adverse impacts at the very, I'm just struggling with how that's feasible, and that's why I want the peer review. And we have a motion, we have a second, I don't know why we're having.
Further discussion.
I, I just posed the question.
Typically, a motion and a second is discussed by the board, not argued by the applicant.
I'm certainly not arguing, I posed the question.
All right, are there any other questions from the board?
I don't have a question, I just wanted to make a comment of, you know, traffic issues aside, I understand there's circulation and pedestrian access issues and safety issues, but I just want to note that this is the redevelopment of a parking lot for business use. Like, it's going to be infill development, take away impervious surfaces, add to our tax base, including a meals tax, on Route Nine, you know, if we can figure out the traffic things, I think this is going to be an overall positive to the town, and hopefully encourage more revenue for the town, in a place that was not generating any revenue, and frankly, was just wasted parking space.
John, I know I come off as a little bit.
I'm not, I'm not saying that to you, I'm saying that to everybody, I want people to keep that in mind.
I'm perfectly happy with, with the owner making a profit, with encouraging this, but I just want to make sure that everybody, that we've done everything we can to make.
Mark, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that to the board as a whole, because I think we're losing, we're losing sight of, of what, what the benefits of this potential development could be, and we're just focusing on traffic and the negatives. And I think there is a positive to it, and I, I think it's a great use of the site that will take over something that's not being used well.
I agree with you, John. All right, we have a motion on the floor for a peer traffic study. Is there any other comments from the board? Are we ready to vote? All in favor? All right, there will be a peer. And could I have a motion to continue this matter until our December meeting?
If I could interrupt.
December 3rd.
Just, there's been a lot of discussion tonight, I would, I've taken minimal notes regarding revisions to the, to the actual site plan, and I just wanted to talk through, I know we have quite a bit of comments, most of them are specification-related from the peer review, the stormwater and site plan layout, as well as the DPW. But from the board's comments, I gathered connectivity issues with the existing building and the parking facility, the width and potential orientation of the driveway, and then potentially landscaping improvements beyond.
I would suggest, instead of listing them off, that you talk to Jenny about those and review the minutes from tonight's meeting, as well as the comments from the public and the letters that we've had from the public. So.
Okay.
Take all those in consideration, and I think you'll see what needs to be done.
Yeah, I just want to make sure when we come back before you, it's.
Right, well, I think.
What we want to see, as well as what you.
I know, I mean, we've all been talking, I agree. I couldn't list them at this point, because I've been trying to listen and take them in, so this is why I think using the minutes and talking to the members of the planning staff that's here, you'll get a better idea of what we're looking for.
And, and this is recorded, too?
Yeah, I know. To be fair, I think you got most of them, I would say internal circulation would be another one.
Right.
But those seem to be the most.
All right, are we ready? Did we have a motion?
I move that the planning board continue the hearing to December 3rd, 2024.
Second.
Is all in favor?
Thank you.
This hearing is continued to the 3rd of December. Thank you. Thank you. I suggest that we go ahead and do the.
Jenny, do you want this back?
Housing production.
Do you want this back?
How long will that take, Chris? Okay, we'll do the housing production, but then I would, since it's after nine, I would suggest that the hearing on the rules and regulations, we adjourn until next meeting.
I'll make a motion to, do we have to open that hearing and continue it? We have to open the.
We have to open the hearing and then continue it?
Rules and regulations?
Yeah, it's a new public hearing, right?
Yeah, it is a new, new public hearing, so.
Open that while they're.
I would suggest, what would I suggest?
I move that we open the public hearing for the planning board regulations and the regulations for the Highway Business District.
Agreed.
Second.
We don't need to move to open it.
Right, you just opened, I opened the hearing.
We, we have to vote to open the hearing.
But I have, no, I have to read the.
We never vote to open.
No, we're not. To open the hearing.
Yeah.
It's been opened.
Well, then, fine.
Opened it, all right, all right. Could I have a motion to continue the public hearing?
You have to read the public.
Do we have legal notice for the?
See, we don't do that. There's got to be some standard Massachusetts rule, like, protocol for meetings of what you have to do, what you don't have to do.
You have to take legal notice.
But we don't do that. Like, towns do it all differently. Like, the state has never sent down anything, it's like, you have to.
Why don't you talk to Jenny about it?
We have.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry.
On this board 15 years, we've never voted to open.
In accordance, wait, in accordance with the provisions of NGL C40A, Section 9, the Westboro Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November 19, 2024, at 6:30, regarding a revision to the planning board rules and regulations, including the contents of applications and general site development standards and guidelines. Additionally, the planning board will review proposed regulations for Section 6.2 of the Westboro Zoning Bylaw, Highway Business Zoning District Development. Public hearing will be held in the Great Hall of the Forbes Building, Forbes Municipal Building, 45 West Main Street, Westboro, Mass. Please see the calendar on the Town of Westboro homepage, posted 48 hours prior to the public hearing for additional information. To access the proposal and any submitted documents, please go to the planning board website. Documents will also be available for review in the Westboro Planning Board office at 45 West Main Street during regular business hours. Persons unable to attend may submit comments in writing to the planning, Westboro Planning Board in advance of the public hearing to attend the public hearing as indicated. This is published in the Community Advocate on the 8th of November, 2024.
I'll make a motion to continue this hearing.
There is a second?
Second.
All in favor? Kristen, you would do the housing.
Good evening, my name's Kristen Belanger, I'm the Assistant Town Planner, and I am here this evening to request that the planning board approve our housing production plan, so then we can move forward to next steps with getting it accepted with the state. So I have a few slides on that process, but before I do that, just for anybody that may be watching, to make sure we're all on the same page and understand what the HPP is, I just have a couple.
Thank you.
So what is the HPP? That stands for Housing Production Plan. It's a proactive strategy for planning and developing our community's affordable housing. Why do we produce a plan? Well, we're more likely to achieve our goals if we have a plan that shows us how to get there. And then what does the plan entail? Throughout the process, a comprehensive housing needs assessment was done, and that would include assessing who currently lives here, the demographic trends affecting future growth, who's going to live here over the next 30 years, and then the existing housing stock, and our future housing needs. And then the product of all of that assessment results in some suggestions or recommendations for affordable housing goals, our mix and type of housing that we need to think about developing, and then potential implementation strategies, identifying zoning districts where we can build this housing, maybe there's municipal-owned property that we can develop those types of things. So now that we understand what the HPP is, these are the next steps for getting it accepted. So tonight, I'm asking for your approval. We already got approval from the select board at the October 22nd meeting. Then we'll prepare a submission package with a copy of the draft HPP document.
So essentially, we've done nothing so far, this is just.
We just have our draft. Submit it. So I need you and select board to say yes, we're good with this plan. And then we put the package together.
Okay.
We submit it to EOHLC, Economic Office, or Executive Office of Housing in Livable Communities. They have 30 days to determine if our package is complete. If something's missing, they let us know, we have the opportunity to revise it. Once it's determined complete, then they have 90 days to give us an approval. And then, you know, at that point, if something's missing again, we have the opportunity to revise, and then they say it's approved or accepted, and it becomes an official plan, and it's good for five years.
And what's the advantage of having this plan?
The.
Besides the, what she said about having a plan?
Yeah.
There's a bunch of grants where.
I mean, that's what I wanted her to explain to the public.
So when a community has an approved housing production plan, it basically shows that you've vetted all the information that you're providing as far as housing to the EOHLC, so that when we go to apply for grants in the future, we've done our homework, and it makes you more viable candidate.
But I just think it's an important thing that we're doing, and therefore, since this meeting is publicized, I mean, on TV, I just wanted the public to understand what we were doing.
Yep.
Yeah, I think, don't, aren't some of the grants, like, based on a point basis? And if you have a HPP approved, do you actually get more points towards your grant application? Is that, am I?
No, that is correct.
Okay.
And you're eligible for more housing grants if you've also shown that you're meeting the goals of the housing production plan.
Anything else, Kristen?
Nope, that's it.
I had a quick question.
I asked for your approval.
As you go through the review process, if the state does have things that need to change, does it have to come back to us for a reapproval?
I don't know. I would say it would, I mean, we would have to change.
Do we have to do like a final approval?
Yeah, you would have to look at whatever modifications they're requesting. I mean, we worked with a consultant, I don't think anything in there is outlandish, so I wouldn't be concerned with that. I'd be surprised if they came back.
Okay.
And this whole plan is on the website, on the planning board website?
Yep.
Or planning department website.
All right. Okay, Jenny, do you have any?
We need to approve it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Could I have a motion to approve the, the housing production plan?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote? All in favor? Thank you, Kristen. Jenny, have you got any update?
Yep, I'll be quick. So one update on a project that I know we've all been eagerly waiting for is the Flanders East Main Street Intersection Project, so we are contracting with an engineering firm to do the 25% design, which is the preliminary design, so that is moving forward. We have funding from a few different sources that the planning board has approved decisions for over the last 10-plus years. So we've been looking at those amounts and gathering them together, and now we're hiring someone, so I think that's great news. It is a Mastot project, so we are not running it, it's going to be a TIP project eventually, so.
So we just do the engineering and then turn it over, essentially?
Right. The second update is the bridge on Fisher Street. I just wanted to update everyone that the bridge has been partially installed.
I saw it, I wasn't all there when I went by this weekend.
Yeah, I did go out there today, and I ran into someone from Mastot, and so they're looking at whether they can pour the concrete before it gets too cold to do so. So it may be pushed to the spring, summer, but the, the bridge is installed, it's just not open yet, and it probably won't be open until the spring, summer.
Oh, that's kind of, that's sort of sad news, because I know people were looking forward to having it open.
Yeah, the reason that it's taken so long is, well, they are saying it's because of permitting with MBTA. That was, that was the reasoning. We have a joint planning board and select board meeting to discuss the B-Wal, and I will be giving a presentation, and Kristi Williams, the town manager, will also be giving a presentation on the current status. That will be January 16th at 6:00 PM in this room, the Great Hall in the Forbes Municipal Building. And then the other update I have is that we are having a wayfinding and branding public workshop, so we're looking for input on the town's identity. You know, how do you, how do you see the town? That will go on signage throughout town, and then the wayfinding is talking about directional signage. Where do we want to go? Where do we want people to, to. we want people to travel? So we did hire a consultant for that, and they'll be doing the public workshop on December 3 at--
3rd or the 2nd?
Monday, the 2nd.
Monday, the 2nd, thank you. Monday, December 2, at 4:00 PM is the stakeholder workshop, so that could be you all, it's town staff. Then there's also a second meeting at 6:00 PM, which is for the public. Attend either, but I would encourage all of you to attend at least one.
There going to be food again?
Maybe. Yes, we do plan to have treats.
The only reason I--
Yeah, treats and coffee.
Yeah, I'll be at the 4:00, I know, not the 6:00.
And then I just want to share real quick. I just got an email today that we are officially an MBTA-compliant community. So we got the final letter.
Very awesome. Very awesome.
Very happy that's, that's finished.
Right. Meeting dates for, if you look at your packet, we have the meeting dates listed for 2025. February 18 must be Washington's birthday week. That way, it's reded here.
School February break.
Yeah, I assume that's the reason that the 18th is redlined. So that's school vacation. My inclination at this point is to leave the calendar as is, and as we get closer, find out whether we actually need to have a meeting or whether we can get by with one meeting those months, before trying to change them around. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's do that. All right, reports of board members on town committees and CMRPC. I did go to a design review meeting this morning. We approved three signs, one for the liquor store, which they're going to finally put the sign up on South Street, delighted about. One for a company called Westchester Spa, not Westchester, Westboro Spa, across from CVS, where that building has been vacant for so long. And the third one, third one, Jenny? Oh, church. The St. Luke's Church, Catholic Church, is putting up a really attractive new sign out in front of the building. Looked really nice. And it's going to also have a, like the other churches we approved, where it had, where you can put letters in for meetings and various things. But I think it's a real improvement, the one that's there at the moment. So that's the only meeting I've had. Anybody else that's been to a meeting that wants to report on it tonight?
I went to CMRPC, and that was fine. They're doing the statewide housing production plan discussion and input. So that was more of an input session than a meeting, a business meeting. We also had the, I'm never going to get this right. It was an advisory financing, even capital expenditures planning committee meeting last night, and we heard, yeah, see, Jenny, you were there and you didn't even know what the name was. Yeah. We heard Jenny present, we heard Fire Department present, and we heard Parks and Rec present. And so it was their capital expenditures. So that was our first meeting. We're going to have another one December 2, I think, and then move toward budget season. But Jenny did a great job. Good job.
We've got two sets of minutes, I know. One is the, I think, October 21st, and the other one was--
Mark wanted to do committee.
I'm sorry.
No, I don't have a committee. I just want to say congratulations to the volleyball team for winning the state championship, and the--
And soccer team, right?
Girl soccer's in the semifinals.
They're in the semifinals, yeah.
I think it's tonight. I could be wrong. Anyway, sorry.
Okay, John, we have minutes for the 21st, and the other one was October 1, maybe? What was the other minute?
So we only have the 21st on the agenda. Can we approve the 1st or no?
I think we can approve both.
Okay. Anybody have any comments? So I did tell Kristen comments on some of these, so we'll go, why don't we do the 21st? We'll do the 1st first.
I had a comment on page 3. Under the A&R application, 49 Art Street, on the third paragraph thing, we said the reason for this A&R is simply to keep, I'd like to clarify, just make that clear, it's to keep Lot 4 in Mr. Ansari's name, because if it just says, "Keep the land in his name," it doesn't specify exactly what we're doing there. That was my comment on the 21st. I had no comments on the 1st.
I had a comment that I told Kristen on page 4 on the 1st, below the recommendation on town meeting Article 11 Transfer Forable Housing Trust Fund. It then gets into a different set of discussion items, but no real heading, and then to actually spell out CPC, because it's not spelled out anywhere else.
That would be the Director of Planning Updates, right?
Possibly. Well, appointments and reports is, should be its own header, so I don't know what those other things are. Yeah, I would assume they are probably Planning Director Updates, yeah, just, just for clarity. And then on the 21st town meeting, I wasn't there, but I'm listed as a Planning Board member that was present, so.
I think it says later on--
It does, but up at the top, it said Planning Board present.
I just have to put it at the top.
John Gelsich, and I'm not, I wasn't there. Yeah, so just, yeah, do like a "not present" and then--
But--
You have "not present," yeah.
You were there for part of it, though, and the meeting was, the meeting of the Planning Board was open the whole town meeting.
I guess if you want to call it that way, fine. I wasn't here for any of this stuff, though.
Right.
Right, we can specify that.
No, I left at the end of the town meeting.
This is before town meeting.
Yeah, so we, we keep, the Planning Board opens the hearing at the beginning, or half an hour before, and then they close it when town meeting adjourns, in case you all need to go aside--
Throw down any--
--discuss something during town meeting. So that's, I think that's why I word it that way, but I agree that it's, it's a little confusing, so--
So if that's the case, then I would just say, instead of doing what I said, just change it to, "Members Gelsich and Kellerher arrived at this time and were not present for the votes."
Chris, you were, oh, you, were you present for the votes?
Not for--
Not for--
Only three votes.
Okay.
I did not note that.
After the kids fed breakfast.
Yeah, because it just shows that it's after the votes.
Right.
I wouldn't worry about the actual time.
So, could, oh, John is-- Hey, John, do you want to ask for a vote?
Could I have a motion to approve the minutes of October 1 and October 21, 2024?
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes as revised tonight.
There is a second?
Second.
All in favor? Five, nothing?
All right, we talked about upcoming dates for the meetings. We can keep track of whether we're going to need a meeting on the 17th. I think this is going to depend on what we have before us and whether it's necessary. So let's just look at those dates as they come up. All right, if there's no other business tonight, could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you very much, everyone.